So this is the Select Board meeting for Monday, February 7, 2022. I'm Susan Verdicchio. I serve as Chair. I'm here with my colleagues, Mariano Goldewolfe, Mike Bettencourt, Rich Mucci, and also with the Acting Town Manager Beth Rudolph and Assistant Town Manager Mark Too Good. And Patty Mahailich is handling the Zoom. So thank you all for joining us. So this, I should just run through our next meetings. The next one is coming up on February 28th. That's another Monday. And then after that will be March 7th. And the current plan is for the board to vote on the Spring Town Meeting warrant on the 7th. And then we have a second meeting in March will be in March 28th, following the town election. And since this is the first meeting in February, can we just go ahead and have our land acknowledgement, please?
Yeah, so as one step towards carrying out our Equity and Anti-Racism Initiative, we acknowledge that we are meeting on the ancestral homeland of the Massachusetts people who lived here for thousands of years before European colonists began arriving about 1630. In the 1600s, the Massachusetts were led by San Squa of Mississippi, who led her people through epidemics, wars, and displacement. We acknowledge that Winchester exists within a region where lands were taken under unjust and violent circumstances, causing a forced relocation that continues to have harmful effects on native communities. As part of the town government of Winchester, we recognize our responsibility now to be good stewards of this land. And we acknowledge that Massachusetts, Wampanoah, and other indigenous people from across the country currently live in Winchester and throughout the state and contribute to our community in myriad ways.
Thank you. So why don't we go straight into the acceptance of donations, please?
Okay, before I do that, if I can announce something. At our last meeting, we took a vote on a couple of parking spaces in the Jenks Lot for a charger. And we were notified by our we were notified by our Sustainability Director that we received a grant for, what is it, around $104,000 for the installation of two chargers. And I know there's a lot of people that worked on it, but Ken Pruitt, our Sustainability Director, brought up a couple of people to thank Wei Chen, Ruth Trimarki from the Climate Action Advisory Committee, as well as our Town Planner Brian Sicelli and Kristin Patnud from a firm that was assisting in the preparation of the grant proposal.
Thanks for doing that, Mariano. That was a good announcement.
So I move that we accept donations in the amount of $202 from friends of the Winchester Recreation Department to be used for the Winchester Recreation Department Neighbors Helping Neighbors Fund to support Winchester families and to attend recreation programs.
Thank you.
Right, and a roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Town managers report.
Let me share my screen. Everybody see that? Okay?
Yes.
So just a few things. I included in the packet that went to the board a copy of the work plan that we had discussed at our last work plan meeting with some updates. My plan is to include that in your packet at the first meeting of every month, and I'll highlight any changes that are made over that time. And then, as we talked about, we recommend holding kind of a quarterly check-in, just a work plan session for that. So the next one would be in April. That's a recommendation. Spring Town Meeting update. So the Spring Town Meeting warrant closes on Friday, March 11th, and the Select Board would need to vote the final Town Meeting warrant no later than April 4th. And the first night of Town Meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 25th. So March 11th is the deadline for anybody, boards, committees, citizens' petitions to be submitting their warrant articles to the Town Manager's Office. So just make sure that's something that folks are interested in. You get that in by that date. A couple of updates from the Clerk's Office. So our town election is scheduled for Saturday, March 19th. That Winchester High School are in the process of selling our transportation permits and collecting back our annual census forms, as well as dog licenses, which can be renewed online. Some exciting capital and construction project updates. So the North Wasover Dam Project is currently out to bid. That bid deadline was extended from last Tuesday till tomorrow. So hopefully we'll get some good news then. And we also have bids out for the Fire Department HAC, which will be back mid-February. And then the transportation project with the opening is scheduled for March 10th. As Mariana mentioned, we have exciting news about the awarding of that grant for the DC Fast Electric Vehicle Charging Stations, which will be installed in the Jenks Lot and then in two in the DPW visitors parking area. Moving forward with some other updates. The Church Street and Waterfield Intersection Project, which was postponed from last fall, is scheduled to begin construction this spring. The contractor expects to be in around March, May 1st. And we expect work to last 6 to 8 weeks. And we have a site meeting set up for mid-March with the budding businesses and restaurants and the contractor to discuss logistics and any impacts to their properties as part of that. The MBTA, we just recently got an update that they're expecting to start sometime in mid-March, weather-dependent. So that will be a significant disruption to the town center with the closing of Lareway Road and the closing of part of the Waterfield Lot and Abrojona Lot. The EverSource 115 KV Project is ongoing. This is the project that runs from Medford to the Weber Substation. They are currently expecting to start work on a jack and bore operation at the Wedgemere Train Station to go under the tracks next Monday. That work, they expect to be 24-hour operation. It's extending between Monday and next Friday. And they'll be notifying residents in that area. So that will be a full day and night operation out there. And I'm sure there'll be some limited noise impacts in that area. And then finally, if you haven't seen our new town website, we're live last Monday. And it's, I think, a great outcome, both from a function standpoint and aesthetic standpoint. One of the things I wanted to highlight is that we now have one joint community calendar. So this is basically the front page of the website. If you just scroll down a little bit, you can see the calendar, which includes both government events as well as communication events. So, excuse me, community events. So on Tuesday, February 8th, you can both learn how to make lava cakes at the library and also go to the Conservation Commission meeting. So pick your pleasure for that evening. Our Fire Department has graduated four firefighters from the State Fire Academy last weekend. One of our firefighters finished number one in the class and was awarded the Richard and Banks Outstanding Student Award. So happy, looking forward to having them join us here in the town of Winchester. COVID-related updates. So the Board of Health is continuing to hold weekly COVID testing in the Town Hall Auditorium. Next dates are February 9th and February 16th. Registration is available online. This was a mistake. I guess we're no longer, the Medford Vaccination Clinics are no longer going on. So that's not something that, unfortunately, we're able to attend right now. But some other good news is that the town did receive all 7500 at-home test kits, two tests per kit, back on January 25th. And we've distributed them to town staff here at Town Hall, Public Safety, DPW, Library, Recreation, Jenks Center, the School Department, and Health Department is working on distribution to a variety of organizations and other folks in need. So we're also been handing them out at the weekly COVID testing clinic. So that was a really great outcome for us and do have some additional supplies. So we'll be looking to how to distribute those in the next few weeks. And then finally, just a couple of events. The Wiffy Virtual Tribune is happening. And then there's a program at the library on February 16th to celebrate that Black History Month. Happy to take any questions on any of that.
Anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Appears not. So thank you, Beth, for the complete report. I did want to note that we do have a hearing coming up in a few minutes. I don't want to run late for that. But I just wanted to note that Stacy Ward, the Controller, unfortunately cannot be with us to actually deliver her report or take any questions. But I think Beth would concur that her memo indicated that revenues and expenditures are going as anticipated. There's nothing. If anything, revenues are coming in higher than budgeted, so we're in good shape financially at this point. And should we go ahead and talk about the Controller's vacation carryover piece here? And I know she explained that she had some people in her office out on long-term leave or out for different reasons. And so she was filling in, was not able to take the vacation time that she has coming to her and wanted to carry over into the next year, just so she can actually take that time off, which she deserves. And, you know, it's important for all our staff to take their vacation time.
I think 2021 was a tough year for everybody to be able to take vacations. So I'm in favor of this request to carry over to 2022. And I know she already took some of those hours already this year. So if there's some other comments, I move that we approve the request from the Controller to carry over 55 vacation hours from 2021 to 2022, in addition to the 35 hours that do not require approval by her contract.
And a roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. 7:43. Because we have a couple of minutes for public comment. If anybody is here for public comment, anybody, a member of the public, this would be a chance just to share any thoughts or suggestions, any input from a resident, any residents, anybody here? If you want to speak, just raise your Zoom hand and we'll elevate you. And you can make a comment if you wish. I don't see any hands. So I'll go ahead and just close public comment. Glad everybody is here just to attend. That's good. And I guess we'll just go ahead with the Norwood at Church Street signage. So Beth, if you could go ahead and do that.
My town engineer hat. Do you want to open the hearing?
Yes. Okay, declare the hearing open. Go ahead.
So we have received, T-TAC, or excuse me, the Traffic Review Committee in this Select Board receives an email back in 2018 from a resident of Norwood Street expressing concern about the on-street parking. I'm going to share my screen here so we can look at some visuals. So this is Norwood Street, heading out. This is Church Street at the end of the street here. They say they had gotten, almost gotten to an accident vehicle turning off of Church Street due to cars parked on Norwood Street and requested that the parking regulations in this area be evaluated. So right now, the right-hand side of this picture is no parking. And there's, so there's a no parking restriction here and there's no restrictions on the left-hand side. So when TRC reviewed this, our recommendation was to restrict parking from this section from Church Street, basically down to the entrance of this driveway for 78 Church Street at the corner here. And I'll push it an overhead here. So basically this stretch here to make this no parking as well, to allow some additional room for cars turning in and off of Church Street onto Norwood. That's our recommendation.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
So this is, you know, as many of us have, you know, driven on the street, it is rather narrow. And so, you know, this makes perfect sense to me. Is anyone here, anyone, well, first, before we get to the public, anybody on the board have any questions or comments? So seeing none. If anyone is here, any member of the public is here to speak on this, now is your chance. Now is your time to go ahead. I guess I'm seeing none there as well. No hands raised. So thank you. And I'll go ahead and close the hearing. So I'll take a motion, because I'm ready for a motion here.
And I guess, I mean, the notifications went out because I'm surprised that the property owner, 78, is not here for the hearing. But, okay, so I'll, I move that we approve the recommendation from the Traffic Review Committee to install no parking signage on the west side of Norwood Street, from Church to the driveway, from Church Street to the driveway of 78 Norwood Street. Oh, it is 78 Church Street?
Yeah, that has fronts on Church Street.
Oh, okay, I see. Yeah.
Yeah.
But the driveway is on Norwood Street.
The driveway is on Norwood. Yeah.
Again.
And do a roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. This dates back a bit, so I'm glad we got to this.
Yeah, clear out our backlog a little.
Yeah. So that brings us to the Abrojona Initiative. And I know that Elaine Vreeland is probably here and a number of people. So whoever is the spokesperson, we'll go ahead and elevate you. Hi, Elaine.
There we go. Oh, here's Reed. Go ahead, Reed.
Hi. How are you? Are we ready?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, this is, the Abrojona Initiative is something sponsored here by the Conservation Commission. So we have several members of the Conservation Commission and Conservation Agent Officer Elaine Vreeland. Go ahead. Thanks.
Yes, thank you for having us tonight with me, myself and Anne Store. We are both members and Elaine Vreeland, who is our longtime administrator, and Zeke Nims, who is our Chair, I think, is snuck on also. You've seen the presentation that was in your packet along with the video. I'm just going to speak briefly. I'm hoping to really engage in a conversation with you guys. It's been about five years since, with your support, the Abrojona Initiative was started back in, actually, seven years, back in 2015. So can I share my screen?
I believe so.
Yes, you are. You're able to.
Great. So really, the goal of the Abrojona Initiative, as a working group of the Conservation Commission, has always been to restore a healthy, sustainable, and beautiful habitat along the banks. But as we've been really aggressively going after this for the last year and talking to groups across town, boards, commissions, anyone who will listen to us, we've realized there's a far greater opportunity than just planting some nice plants and making everything look nice. We've found that our work can be a foundation for cultural displays and events, resident and visitor enjoyment, commercial and business events, and town gatherings. I don't certainly have to tell you much about the history, but obviously, Kellaway and his plan back over 100 years ago wanted Mill Pond to be the center of town. His process was to help join a lot of our waterways and hopefully provide access for people to enjoy them. Much of them, many of them have been obscured over years with just immense amount of growth of invasive material. And we started back in 2015, but really for the past four years have been doing a lot of work to remove that. We've also been doing a lot of work with Julie Reiman-Schneider from Design Review, who helped create a landscape master plan over the last decade. Really, our work has been to restore visual access. And we're going to go into a little detail, but that's the work we've been doing so far. It's getting rid of the immense amount of biomass on our waterways downtown. But our goal moving forward and what we're really seeking your advice and support for is is how do we actually take the next step of actually replacing that and rebuilding the bank and creating a healthy habitat? And then again, as we're going to talk about just the immense opportunity that many groups who we've spoken to have seen with this opportunity. So the Abrojona Initiative, our focus is from the high school down to the post office, but really our focus right now is mostly on Mill Pond and the area from Converse to Waterfield Bridges. This is the best picture. If anyone's been on the lawn across from Thompson Place, looking back across the way, this is what we deal with. There's barely a native plant in there. You cannot see the river. You cannot see the bridges. You cannot see the waterfall. You know, when you talk to Julie Reiman-Schneider and the visual pathways she wanted to open up, you can't see the church from Thompson Place. You can't see Thompson Place. We're missing one of our greatest assets in town. So much of our work has been on Mill Pond over recent years, though this is certainly the area below the falls that we want to get to, too. We're moving an immense amount of biomass. But we've been working with a really, really quality ecological contractor who has a knowledge and ability to do work in here to successfully remove a lot of these invasive materials without digging up the bank. We're not really supposed to do that. And it's a really complex process that requires an expertise, you know, to do. And it's required multiple visits over many years to do this. Where we are today is we've done a lot of that work on Mill Pond. We, as Conservation Commission, have spent money that we don't really have an ability to replenish in our budgets to do a lot of that work, to get to a point where people can realize the opportunity we have. This is Miles Connors. He runs the Ecological Company. We want to work with them to create a design that we can use with a palette of plants for all of our waterways downtown. We don't need to create a design like a landscape architect would on a property. We need to develop a plout of plants. We need to work with Julie's Landscape Master Plan to make sure we're not upsteering any view sheds. And then we need to actually, you know, find the funds to actually build in all of our new native plants to stop all of these invasives from coming back. But as a Conservation Commission, our real goal is to create a healthy habitat in this ecosystem. What have we done to date in the last four years? Many of you may not remember because things happen so quickly, but you couldn't see the pond if you were driving down Mystic Valley or walking on that path. You can now see it clearly. We've instituted effective protocol with this company, Parterre, who I was just mentioning. Who knows when to come in, what to do. They just don't walk on the property and start pulling stuff out. There are very specific times and protocols for approaching each and every different invasive plant we deal with. And it requires an expertise beyond just, you know, a regular landscaper. The DPW has been invaluable in doing a lot of our big heavy lifting. But as Jay says, they don't have the licensing certification to do some of the finer work. Immense amount of material has come out last year. If you remember, we took a lot of material out across from Town Hall on the Converse Place side. There are large infestation of plants that have spent decades, decades, embedding themselves in the bank. But we can't just come in with a backhoe and dig them out. We have to manage them specifically. And then this past year, we started doing a little bit of fun in some areas where we know we're not going to be putting large woody shrubs back in. We started actually adding some color. We added swamp milkweed, iris, monkey flower, and a number of other fun things to start showing that we can actually have a beautiful pond. I mean, it is. We see pictures on the Winchester page all the time of how beautiful it is. But really, the banks have never been developed, even going back to Kellaway and that blue water that he saw in the pond back over 100 years ago. We've never built a proper habitat on these downtown waterways. To date, over these last four years, we spent nearly $40,000 of Conservation Commission money. We are not funded outside of Elaine's salary and a limited office budget that she gets. This is money that we've accumulated over decades to prove a point, to prove that we can actually do something really significant and then build the consensus across town to realize that this is something that's worth, you know, investing in. We can't continue this effort, which is why we've been going through town and actually coming to you to help us figure out how we can move forward to that next step. The opportunity, obviously, for us as a Conservation Commission is the environment, the habitat. But as we talk to people, the opportunity, you know, when we went to the Chamber of Commerce, when we went to the Cultural District Partnership, they saw, obviously, an immense value of having a wonderful backdrop that would allow them to do whatever they can imagine. But for us, it's really about, you know, creating a beautiful environment, a healthy habitat for insects, flower, you know, and fauna and all the other wonderful critters that enjoy our wetland areas. We've been around. We've been talking to a lot of people. I have yet to find anyone you can talk to, and anyone we talk to, everyone supports this. In fact, everyone has an idea of how to go a step further, and that's another issue. But, you know, we've gotten unanimous support from the Conservation, Planning, Design Review, Chamber, Cultural District, Home and Garden Club. The Jenks wants to talk to us. We're going to go to Wright Lock Historical Society, on and on. Everyone sees the real value of what we're doing here. Just briefly, I want to paint a picture that this is sort of built. There are a number of ideas that have come out of this. But if you can imagine this area, Meg White came to us with a filing recently. They're going to do work on the Converse Bridge. They're going to do some cosmetic work and replace the caps, make it a little nicer on the top there. I've been talking to a member of the Traffic Committee, and he and I and a couple of other people have started talking about this idea. Imagine on the dirt side, on the Mystic Valley side, imagine a boardwalk along the pond there, where people could lean over and people could walk behind. It would be accessible from Converse to the library. And imagine the library, someone on the planning board and some other people I've been talking to love the idea of, now these are ideas, imagine amphitheater tiers receding on the library lawn, where you could put chairs and lay up blankets and spend an afternoon doing something, enjoying events. And then while we can't really talk about this now because they're filing in front of us, but imagine 10 Converse being developed in whatever capacity it is. Imagine the space that's over there. Imagine all four sides of Mill Pond finally realizing a vision of over 120, 110 years. Now imagine 2,000 people being able to gather around Mill Pond, you know? And what can the Chamber do? And what can the Cultural Council do? How can we go further and engage a riverwalk that goes up around Judkins Pond and comes down Shore Road, where there's ideation going on about developing Shore Road? Imagine what we could do by having trails. Certainly, the Chamber and the Cultural District are really excited about what this is. We, as a humble Conservation Commission, really are here to focus on the bank. It really is just the foundation for all their other ideas that could happen as a result of this. So we come to you here today. We're looking for your support, advice, options for how we can move forward. I intentionally didn't put any dollar figures in here because, you know, 10 Converse is obviously a giant variable in this. You know, but I'm in this business, Miles, who runs the Ecological Companies in the Business. We have working numbers and thoughts of what it's going to be, but it's, you know, it's not significant. But the idea is if we can do this area, Mill Pond, and if we can do the area between Converse and Waterfield Bridges, it would take about two seasons. That's how these types of projects work, completing the invasive work and then replanting. And I'd like to open it up and have a conversation with you guys and hear what you're thinking and maybe suggestions for how we can continue to move forward.
Thank you so much for putting this together and also for all of the time and effort and thought that has clearly gone into making, you know, making this real in part so that everybody part so that everybody can see what the potential is. This is really impressive. So I guess the first thing would be to see if anybody on the board has any questions or thoughts. Any reaction? Yes, Mike.
Thanks, Susan, and thanks, Reed and Conservation Commission, everyone involved. I mean, this is really, I heard the presentation earlier. It's really amazing to see what so many groups over a period of time can get accomplished and I hope we can find a way to support this project and continue to support it as much as possible. So thank you again. It's really quite amazing and it's something that the the work, something that everyone in town can appreciate and is enormous value for the entire community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I want to thank everybody who's who's worked on this and absolutely support in whatever we can do. So select word to support this. The the Aborigine is a great resource that we have in town and for many years, unfortunately, it's been, you know, you can't see it many times because of the growth on the bank. So to be able to take care of that and open it up for everybody's enjoyment and to be a better steward of of that land is something that absolutely support.
Yeah, yes, Susan, I agree with what everyone else has said. I guess I just have a question, Reed. You know, do you have a ballpark of what it would cost for the two seasons that you're talking about?
Yeah, so there are two stages. The first is is engaging with the the company and creating a design. And that's that's not as much a landscape architect design as it really is creating a plant palette and figuring out locations. And, you know, I've got a proposal for $2,300 or $2,400 to do that design. And then the two of us together, if we take out 10 Converse, in other words, if we take out Mount Vernon to to Converse in terms of that variable, this is a $50,000 job. You know, again, I I'm hesitant to throw out a number and commit to it, but I mean, you know, it's it's not it's not a tremendously large, you know, figure. Obviously, there's a lot of real estate on the other side. I don't want to comment on on, you know, filings that are in front of us and what's happening there. Obviously, if we if we needed to handle that side, it would be probably adding another $40,000 to it or something, but the challenge is there are two things. We are looking to get the money to actually do this work, you know. Many of you are probably gardeners, you know, good, bad, whatever it might be, green thumbs, black thumbs. But you know that when you do work, you have to do planting and then you have to care for it afterwards. So we're looking at these two stages. We're here to look for, how do we actually get this done? And then we're trying to build into our conservation budget. Annually, we put a proposal in, you know, in front of the FinCom for the money to care for it, but really to do the work. We figure for Mill Pond and the area below is probably X the 10 Converse side, probably about 50,000.
Mike, go ahead.
Thanks, Susan. I don't want to kind of jump the gun here, but we traditionally put forward earmark requests to our, you know, delegation and I believe that the one stage of this project, project, there was an earmark funding some of the work. But so, you know, I think that there it makes sense for us to continue to look for resources that way to continue the project, make sure it's 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 fully funded. So I know that our delegation had just just reached out to us. There's obviously a lot of priorities and things in line, but it may be an opportunity for us to to move that forward substantially and really faster than, you know, we could through the budget process. So just a suggestion, but certainly not making any promises or anything. It's always always a competitive process.
If I could just say one thing, I mean, the Winchester, the Chamber of Commerce and the Cultural District Group, we've spent a lot of time talking with them. I've we've talked to them as as large groups. I've talked and spoken to members of them individually. There's a huge opportunity that they see that goes beyond whatever we're investing in this. The opportunity to, I mean, imagine a Friday night, 10 Fridays in the summer, that the people come to Winchester and gather around Mill Pond for some event. More than dwarfs would would, you know, what little work that we might need to do to make this an attractive and accessible place.
You you mentioned that you spoke with FinCom. Is that a conversation to put to increase the budget for this upcoming fiscal year?
Sorry, the maybe Elaine can speak to this about how she goes through the process of creating her budget for the year, but she added added a sum of money to her budget.
Right, yeah, I can I can jump in. There was an additional $10,000 requested in their FY23 budget request to dedicate towards the Aborigine Initiative. My budget is due February 15th, and I did recommend maintaining that $10,000 funding in my budget.
Thank you.
And that 10,000, because, you know, obviously, I'm, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, spending one-time money is, you know, is easier to find than than recurring. And but, you know, we want to make sure that we continue the investment. Is the $10,000 per year, is that enough for the maintenance? Part of it?
Yes, that that is that is enough for for the maintenance of this area that we're talking about right now. That was our plan. And we didn't want to come to you for maintenance money. We won't want to come to you with a larger picture. So you know, we've we talked about, let's say it's 50 plus the design of 2,300 to do the work. And then built in our conservation budget would be 10,000 to maintain it. Because if you're all, if any of you are gardeners, you know, you can build a great garden, but you still have to take care of it.
Yeah, there is a large section of work that's already been done. So part of that 10,000 is to maintain what already exists and then also to maintain the areas where you've been able to remove some of the invasive species already.
A lot of the work that's been done is really managing the invasive species. We've done very little in terms of planting other than just some of the some of the more colorful perennials we started doing a little bit this year. So.
And Reed, just so I understand, the 50,000 and the 2,400 that you're quoting, would that would you stretch that over two seasons or is it something you would need all for one season is in an ideal world?
That's that's the number we're we're looking at that would allow us to do this job. So the job in its entirety. And the job, we would do it probably over two seasons because there's still, you know, we handled not weed last year that's going to come back and we we can't plant there until we know it's done. So so it's one job that's going to take probably two seasons for the bulk of it being done in the first season.
I see.
The 10,000 that's in our conservation budget, you know, is the ongoing care that we we just feel we need to build in perpetuity, you know. Otherwise, we might as well just put the money in a big cash bag and throw it down the river.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Sorry, don't mean to make light of it, but.
No, your your planning makes perfect sense that the 50,000, you know, is to do the the initial work and then of course, build into the the annual budget enough to maintain it.
Yes.
Because, you know, some of the planting would suppress some of the invasives.
Absolutely. And and that's the whole point why we want to actually get this going sooner than later because we've exposed a lot of areas. And if they're exposed, the birds, the river, everything's going to bring in the the new invasive. So it's amazing. Some of these plants have been there for decades. And we know that DPW has been in here before. We know that in the past they've come and cut things down. And unfortunately, that doesn't work for some plants. It just it just energizes them. And so we need to deal with that and deal with it properly and do it once and do it right. This is what I do for a business. I'm not an ecological person, but the Ecological Company we work with are absolutely experts in knowing they can tell us exactly what to do with each plant, which is why it's been brilliant that we've been able to work with them.
Right, right. Well, the idea of an earmark is, you know, excellent. We should pursue that, but you never know if you're going to get those. Mariano.
Yeah, Beth, is there a staff recommendation on where we could get the money from, whether it's, you know, has it been proposed to in the capital process or submit an earmark?
Yeah, so this is also the first time I'm kind of hearing the scope of the amount we're talking about. So we can certainly work with Elaine to brainstorm ideas where we might be able to, you know, work to get that funded over the next few years. And if it needs to be funded all at once, or if it's broken up for over two fiscal years, I don't know. When we talk about two planting seasons, I don't know if that means like a spring and a fall, or if that's would be, you know, kind of how it would be spread out over a fiscal year. So we can we can do a little more homework on that.
So I mean, I think applying for an earmark is is a good idea. It's, I think it's something that the legislature might look on it favorably because there's there's something concrete, right, that will get done. Yeah, the other option is to put it in the the capital process as well. Right? Especially if if it's something that we are appropriating money for maintenance. I think it makes sense. As a capital project, we know it's something that we're we're spending on something that we will that we're committing to maintaining, right? So that's that's always a good thing.
We we did go to capital planning back in the fall. Went in one door, went out the other. They didn't think it was something for them. So just to see, you know, that that part of it.
And so you've invested this 40,000 already?
We've done that over four years. More than 10,000 with an individual contractor. So that's basically what we've been doing, depleting almost almost all of our funds on something we really believe in. So.
And it would be important to protect that investment, yes.
Yeah, you know, you know, we're talking right now. We might have enough maybe to to do some more. But, you know, it's something you have to keep up, especially with how exposed it is right now. We're kind of turning our head, if you will, on the 10 Converse side with what the DPW team has been doing. They're at least keeping things down and waiting to see, you know, we're all waiting to see what's going to develop over there as we go through these hearings.
Yeah, I think we're going to be hearing from them at our next meeting, next couple of meetings.
Yes, I mean, obviously, they're in front of us on the planning board right now.
Right, right.
Just from a staffing standpoint, I don't know if it's something that we can look into, but is this something that possibly rapid recovery funds could be used for as well?
The ARPA funds?
No, the the earmark that we got for rapid recovery.
So I think, and again, I don't have a lot of detail on that, but my understanding was that 100, part of that was 150,000 to hire an economic development consultant, which I don't think would, this would fall into that category.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we did just get the earmark request from Senator Lewis's office, and we were successful in the past with a $50,000 earmark for the Aborigine River Initiative. That's how the plantings on the Town Hall side were done over the past few years. So it's something we can go again.
Well, we'll definitely do that. And then with some further discussion with staff, maybe there's some some other avenues for this $50,000. But I don't think there's necessarily anything for us to vote on right now, but certainly, all of us on the board support it.
So and and thank you. I mean, you know, you continue our streak of finding everyone who who supports supports this work. So Beth, it sounds like maybe you and Elaine will engage in discussions to
Yeah.
further that process.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, obviously, this is what I do. I have a, I'm well versed in timing and 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 all of this. So, you know, I can certainly be involved, but I know, you know, involve me as you need be. But thank you. Thank you again for your time. If you happen to be chatting with anyone, I mean, there are a lot of people in town who really see that this is just a springboard for for other things. You know, the Cultural Council has wonderful plans for doing things around Judkins Pond and Mill Pond, and I think this was creates a wonderful background for getting people to town. Done a lot of work with, you know, just meeting with Dana Garmy over at the Chamber of Commerce, and she's filing for you know, for funding to get visitors here. We should make this yet another wonderful opportunity and make it the center of town as it was always hoped to be.
All right. That's it. That sounds good. Let's let's continue this conversation soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
So that brings us to Lynch School. Thank you, all the conservation folks and this that's very compelling. Thank you for for doing all this. So I guess to turn the page, we'd be starting on this discussion of the Lynch School project and the the water well field land. Beth, do you have anything to sort of any sort of intro or anything we need to set the stage?
Sure. Yep. So I, in a memo that went out to the board for the meeting tonight, there were just a few things I highlighted. So we've had, working with BHP and EFPPC, we've taken a look at the area that on the well field, there's a personally a for a parcel within the Lynch School property that's under the control of the Select Board, the range, or the pieces under control of the School Committee. So BHP has looked at the wells and they're here this evening if there's any questions. So that's one of the issues to discuss. The other piece we wanted to highlight for the board was how we want, if we if we want to move forward with an additional traffic analysis as part of the project in accordance with the policy that the board adopted back in 2018. The other piece, and I'm not going to go into much detail now, but maybe we can get into more discussion after the presentation is just looking at how this project can help us further our the the goals and objectives outlined in that 2020 Climate Action Plan and how we can use this as a springboard to really meet the objections of that plan. And then last two ones are kind of more minor is just looking at ADA compliance and then integrating this project with the risk assessment that the town is doing for other school and municipal buildings. So I'm sure Chris has a great presentation for all of us with a lot more detail, but those were kind of the things that staff had highlighted, just for everybody to kind of be thinking about as we get into the conversation.
Great. Thanks, Beth. And I see Chris Nixon and Superintendent Frank Hackett and Vivian. Welcome to all of you. Welcome to the to the school and EFPPC team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, if it's okay, I wanted to throw up kind of a little agenda of our talking points tonight and ask if Jay Nardone, who's the Chair of the EFPPC, could just go real quick and introduce everybody, be sure everybody's acknowledged.
Yes.
And then I I have just about three or four minutes and we can throw it over to our friends at Tape because we have a big announcement to make tonight on the Lynch Direction.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Thank you for having us tonight. Excuse me. So Jay, my name is Jay Nardone, Chair of the PBC. I have Chris Bleson and Charlie Hay from Tape on with us. Vivian and Andy from Hill International, our OPM. We also have Dr. Hackett, Chris Nixon, of course, and Karen Bonnais from the Chair of the School Committee, joining us tonight, I believe. Can't see them out there, but I think we're all in attendance.
Yes, I hate to interrupt, but the quickest thing would be for me to say to Patty that I don't know if Karen. Oh, I see.
Okay.
Okay.
You're sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead.
And then Chris is going to walk us through the website and the updates. These we're working so hard on.
I'll I'll bring this up. I get faster at this every time I do it. So so first of all, we just want to make a public announcement for those who haven't heard that the the place to go, your landing pad for information on this exciting project is lynch2025.com. This is what the homepage looks like. Folks can learn about the process, how we're working with the MSBA, what we did last month in December, what we're doing this month in January, what's coming up next. Haven't updated this. This is old as of an hour ago, but there's always a color bar on the homepage that tells you what we're doing next week. That's what I should change it to. And then at the bottom of the homepage, we have our overall schedule. And I may come back to this just when I close my remarks, but these are really, these are the major milestones on the project. The Preliminary Design Program, which includes our our Educational Space Program, was already submitted in January. And as as you'll hear more in a few minutes, the design team developed actually 11 options to begin with. When we kicked this off and we narrowed them to six, then to four, then to three, and then tonight actually picked one. So that was exciting. This and other information needs to go in the Preferred Schematic Report, which is submitted to the MSBA in March. A lot of work still yet to do, particularly for our Sustainability Subcommittee, which has just formed, and they're kicking off a meeting next week. So we're excited about that as well. Some of the dates here, I think, will be familiar to the board and certainly management. We are looking for the MSBA to approve our Preferred Schematic in late April. That we would then take that forward into a much more detailed schematic design package, more understanding about project scope and budget. That we would then take that forward into a much more detailed schematic design package, more understanding about project scope and budget. A fall town meeting, project funding agreement vote, followed by a debt exclusion override in January. I'm not going to go through everything on the website. There is a project team page where people can learn more about who our consultants are, who the EFPPC is. The sustainability subcommittee I mentioned was just established last week. It's a public body. We have five members of the EFPPC and three key staff members as well. That includes Ken Pruitt, our new sustainability director, Pete Lawson from DPW, and Andrew Marin, who's our operations director. And this group will be working closely with our OPM, with Hill, with Tape and their consultants, including the sustainability consultant. I mentioned a moment ago, a word about design. For anybody who wants to understand where we've been and where we're going, this is somewhat in chronological order. A real quick overview of the many options that have been developed. Let me just pause and say, this includes some of our early goals, and I I should have said this first, Susan. We took pains when we wrote this project RFP to reference Winchester's Climate Action Plan. We specifically directed the OPM and all of the architects to the goals of the Climate Action Plan. And we went further to make it clear the school committee is looking for a lead certified building. So there really is a deep commitment, really from all parties on the project team side for making some really smart choices that really fall in line with some of Winchester's aspirational goals, whether that's reducing greenhouse gases, reducing costs or both. So we went from eleven to six, as I mentioned, down to four. The team began to look at stacking diagrams. And you'll see from Charlie tonight kind of where we've landed. We have some overarching kind of guidelines for the community that helps them understand the various things that we've been considering as we evaluate these many options. The piece that I really wanted to dwell on tonight, because it kind of pertains to the well field parcel, and I know I'm I'm looking forward to talking with you all. The Lynch site is large, but very, very unusual. There's some topography. We have we have some restrictions because of Horn Pond Brook. We have a flood plain, a floodway. We have some conservation commission requirements to be met or restrictions, but then right smack dab in the middle, we have this four acre parcel. The water department land, which the EFPPC and school committee refers to as the well field. At this location, back in the, I think it was early nineteen thirties, the town installed twenty-five drinking water wells as a supplemental source of water. And once we reached in an an agreement with the MWRA in the nineteen fifties, this well field was abandoned in the late fifties, and the pump house was actually burned in fifty-nine or sixty. And there it sat for all these years. As you will understand in Charlie's presentation in a few moments, this land is really critical as we see it in achieving our preferred option. Because our preferred option is going to require some of this land. Two important points that Vivian and Andy have been really helpful to make to our community. We can submit a preferred option to the MSBA on March third. That includes using this land. That's okay. Because we will explain to them this is town land, and hopefully we'll be able to say we have an agreement, we're working on a transfer, and that will ultimately land on the Spring Town Meeting warrant. However, the MSBA board will not entertain a vote on the project until the land is under the control of the school committee and the school department. So we have until that vote. That vote is scheduled in in September. And so that's why the Spring Town Meeting becomes a critical path for the actual transfer. Last comment I'll just make for anybody who's looking for information on the project. Windcam has been absolutely fantastic. They are recording these meetings over Zoom. They broadcast them on the education channel. You can find links for streaming to all of our meetings here on the presentations page. And we also have a field below for some key presentation documents as the project evolves. So this is just basically going to to grow over time. So with that, I will go back to the homepage, like I said I would. This isn't going to change too much. We hope the schedule does not change. Anything new, you can look for in the blue bar. And if any, if anybody has any questions about the project, they are welcome to submit them in writing to this link here, lynchtwentytwentyfivefaq@gmail.com. We have a communications team that's fielding these questions. We'll get answers back. We'll post them on the website. We haven't received any questions yet, but I'm sure we will at some point soon, and so we've built that resource as well. So with that, I'm gonna stop sharing and ask if Jay can maybe make an announcement on our preferred option, and then we pivot to Charlie from Tape, if that would be okay.
Happy to do so. So tonight, we viewed all the options again, and we're putting forward N five as our preferred scheme schematic. Which Chris will be, I mean, Charlie will be able to share with you the drawing.
And that is a that's a full replacement option. And and perhaps as as Charlie is beginning to share a screen, we should just also point out the MSBA requires us to submit a renovation option, an addition renovation option, and a replacement option. The renovation option does not meet the space program because the building just doesn't work. We already know that. It's one of the reasons we're going through this whole process. So it's really down to a choice between the add reno and a new build.
So can folks see the screen? Of this presentation?
I can.
Yes.
Great. So you're seeing a you're seeing the cover sheet from tonight's presentation. I'm Charlie Hay from Tape Architects. Thanks to Jay and to Chris. I'm gonna go very quickly through the presentation we gave this evening to the building committee. And the MSBA is, as I think has been discussed, and as you probably know, and thank you very much for for having me as well, requires us at this early stage to look at three different approaches, a renovation, a renovation addition, and a replacement. And that's what we did during the initial, what's called PDP, which is preliminary design program process, and that the second submission to them, which is going to happen in the very beginning of March, is called a PSR, and that's a preferred schematic report. And it's at that point that they expect the building committee to be advancing, as Jay and Chris just talked about, a preferred approach. We're still in the very conceptual phases of planning. But we're following a very prescriptive, and you all have done MSBA projects before you, the town knows what this is about. But it's 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 quite defined, and it follows specific menu of submissions. So this is really, it's it's a significant milestone that the committee came to a conclusion and on the preferred approach. And and it's and it's to their credit, because there's a lot of material to digest in a very short amount of time. This has been a very aggressive schedule. And it's it's important to get to this place. So this was, this is really the addition renovate. So we're not going to talk about the renovation option. Because renovation option doesn't really meet the needs of the community of the district. It, you know, obviously, you wouldn't be considering a project if you thought that your existing Lynch was adequate. So the MSBA asks you to look at it, however, I did, you know, it's very unusual for renovation, standalone renovation to be the preferred option. However, a renovation addition is a definitive possibility because you can expand the footprint of the Lynch, which this diagram shows. You can see the brown box to the north of the existing Lynch. And by doing that, you have really developed a school which has the kind of square footage you need that the district is is asking for and that are in the in and that is reflected in the approved space template that the school committee has reviewed. Which is space template being kind of a list of 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 rooms and a total square footage. So this site plan shows you with with Horn Pond Brook to the right. And then Brantwood Road and Pond Street to the left on this plan, the soccer fields to the north, the water department parcel to the north. The existing building down at the bottom of the sheet, this shows you this addition coming to the north. So fundamentally, the site stays very much the same, and the Lynch building as a one-story effectively a one-story building stays the same. There would be a new pre-K wing that accommodates the proposed seven pre-K classrooms. And the entire inside of the building would be reprogrammed to try to accommodate the classrooms that are needed and trying to group them in a logical way. The fact of the matter is that the Lynch would continue to be a fairly spread out school. And it wouldn't do some of the things that the district would like to do in terms of what we learned during the sort of educational visioning process around creating multiple grade, kind of smaller learning communities. And trying to create sort of breakout spaces that that students can use. So this plan, however, does kind of, and also the other problem is, of course, there is a lower level at the Lynch. So at least a grade is going to be isolated. But this plan tries to do our best to come up with a kind of revisioned internal organization to an existing school. And of course, the option and the cost associated would include really code upgrades, complete code upgrades, complete systems upgrades, entirely new envelope. And the like, which makes it, and it's interesting, this happens over and over again. The cost is often, and in this case, is very similar to a replacement option. So this was the, this was the 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 addition renovation option we looked at, and we then looked at we looked at a host of replacement options. Actually, there was, there was multiple approaches to replacement. The the one that was winnowed down was N five, and this was the initial diagram of it that the committee has been discussing. This is a more up-to-date footprint on a more up-to-date site plan. But again, it shows you the same orientation of the site with the water department parcel to the north. And this replacement building would be constructed next to the existing Lynch and below the soccer fields. So there's an area there that has trees and and is the edge of the parking lot for the existing school that we could place a building that actually has a good orientation for solar. It really connects the soccer fields to the north and the site to the south, including the lovely kind of wooded area to the southeast along Horn Brook Pond Brook, Horn Pond Brook, excuse me. And it really begins to fully utilize the site, which doesn't happen now. And one of the things we heard loud and clear from the community and from the the teachers and staff during the visioning sessions was the desire to maximize the utility of the site, get kids outside, learning and playing, and trying to find ways of increasing green space and activity space. So this this plan begins to do that at least in a conceptual way, but it does encroach upon water department, the water department parcel in doing so. This shows plans, conceptual plans, with the cafeteria and the gym on the far left. The first floor would be an early learning center essentially with K and pre-K grouped together as well as administration and music. The second floor would be grades one, two, and three, which the district feels is an educationally appropriate and developmentally appropriate sort of organization of the building vertically. And the third floor would have grades four and five, so those are those transition years before we get to middle school. And they're really grouped together as teams, which is seen as a really beneficial strategy. This is a very early sort of blocky schematic of the building of of how it might look. And this was a site analysis we did to try to explain, and I'm not going to go into this because it, you know, the people who are looking at it this evening have seen multiple views of this and understand sort of the 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 kind of it's an ongoing discussion about how you fit a building with flood plains to your north and existing building to your south. Wetland setbacks and riverfront setbacks to your east. And the constraints of of a of a limited property to the west. So the building is being put in the one location it could possibly be put while we still keep the existing Lynch on site, which is the building down to the bottom. But this really explained that the we talked a bunch about topography and about elevations and the like. So that's really, that's the that's the quick version of the presentation we made this evening. And the committee's final decision was to pick N five over the addition renovation option.
And can I, Charlie, can you just take a moment to describe, having just made that selection, and the kind of work that still lies ahead for that PSR submission?
So the the, as I mentioned, there was something called the PDP, and the PDP was really a fact-finding submission. So that was, what are the existing conditions? The PSR is is now beginning to look at what the proposed systems might be for the project, what the preferred option is for the project. And and once we get that submitted, the MSBA then knows that we have an approach. So the point of the PSR is really to define an approach. It isn't a final product. It isn't a hundred percent a design that I am quite confident they all do. It will change over time. But it gives intent to the MSBA, and it gives an approach to the MSBA. There will be very conceptual costing developed around this, but it really isn't until the next phase, which is called the schematic design phase, which we'll complete this summer, that we get into detailed design and start to and start to really roll up our sleeves and work with the educators and the district on exactly how to organize the building as effectively as we possibly can for teaching and learning.
And so, Susan, another key element of this, of course, are the logistics, the construction logistics. How much swing space do we think we really need? And 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 to the extent kids need to move off the site, which they will, how many and how do we accommodate that? So Tape is going to be bringing back to the EFPPC at our next meeting some early thoughts about some of the the construction phasing and logistics. And then similarly, Dr. Hackett's going to be reaching out to some representatives of the Lynch community, once we begin to kind of understand that, to get their feedback. So we're beginning to think about where does where does kindergarten go? Where does first grade, where does second grade go? You know, we we have a pretty good idea of what we could fit, let's say, at the upper level of Parkhurst with a relocated central office. Is that enough? Do we need to look at maybe bringing a couple of dry modulars onto that site? There's a lower level of Parkhurst. Pre-K is there today, and and Dr. Hackett is, you know, he's just been recently coming out saying, you know, this is really working pretty well. And maybe my preference would be to just kind of leave pre-K where they are downstairs for that community. So you know, these are the kinds of things that I think are beginning to come into focus, and I think for some families will be a source of relief when they get that kind of direction, and for others, maybe a source of anxiety because some other things are still on the table. But you know, we're we're thinking right now somewhere between eight to twelve classrooms of swing space would would be needed, but that will come into more focus, you know, later. Jay Nardone, I have to give him credit. Jay has has said all along from the very beginning, nothing makes this project more attractive to a contractor than having all the kids off-site completely. You know, we did that at VO. We did it at Ambrose, and I was, I had to be reminded because I didn't live here at the time, but I moved here when we were wrapping up the Lincoln Elementary School project, but we did that for Lincoln as well. We used Parkhurst and Mystic and split those kids up. So for all three of our last elementary rebuilds, we moved all the kids off-site. That's a higher hurdle on this Lynch project, but I think it's it's something the team's looking at really hard.
Chris, can I just ask, just before the conversation moves any in a different direction? When you say pre-K is in the lower level of Parkhurst now, you you're saying that pre-K townwide is in the lower level of Parkhurst now?
No, and Frank can weigh in on this. So we, as you knew, Judy Evans moved the two classrooms to VO maybe three years ago. So it's the pre-K that was at Lynch last year that actually moved to the lower level of Parkhurst over the summer.
Four sections.
Four sections.
Four sections.
Or six, six section total to a VO.
Okay, thank you.
And Susan, on but on that point, because we do have two pre-K classrooms at VO, you know, then the question is, do you sort of leave well enough alone? Is there any value in bringing pre-K together just while we're building Lynch? If the goal, of course, is to have expanded pre-K at Lynch. So I think right now, and Dr. Hackett should speak up if I'm wrong, I think our thinking is just let pre-K sit where they are at VO. That's working for those families. As you know, I mean, some kids are there for year one, they go there for year two. We have repeaters. One of my kids did that. And then we've got these four sections at Parkhurst.
Okay, yeah. I was just trying to understand, you know, if Parkhurst both levels could absorb all of Lynch. And you're saying probably not. So, okay.
Yeah, not even close, really. There are really four usable classrooms downstairs that have windows outside door access. And then there's, I believe, in total, like another 12 spaces upstairs. So we would be pretty far short of being able to hold all of Lynch.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, at this stage, Susan, it looks like if we were only going to look to move two grade levels out of Lynch, and therefore we need eight classrooms, we can comfortably do that with the upper floor of Parkhurst, comfortably meeting room for specials and specialists and so forth. But alternatively, if we need to move three grade levels out, then we're going to have to look at a supplemental, one or two modulars and, and then get really serious about what kind of space to various specialists need. But we're, we're just sort of not quite there yet.
Okay, got it.
Thank you for asking about that.
Yeah, that, that's helpful, just adds a little more context to the, the swing space discussion. So, thank you, Chris and Jay and Charlie and Frank. Is there anything else you wanted to cover? Or are we going to segue to select board questions and so forth?
Well, I might, I might just acknowledge, you know, Beth made some comments there at the introduction. I know there's some other things you guys are interested in. There were some questions about ADA. I might let Jay speak to that, you know, about how, what maybe bring in that third party reviewer once documents are complete, sort of through the punch list process.
Yes, I mean, we, we ended up doing that at the McCall, I believe, was the first one. Third party, they came in, I think Susan, you were with us at the time. And they reviewed the drawings before construction. And then they made a spot check and then came afterwards and it worked out very well. And we had decided at that point that we'd be using that type, that procedure going forward on any projects. So that would, that would address the ADA.
Yeah, thank you.
And on the issue, Susan, of the, that traffic, traffic safety study, you know, the, the most recent project where that really came into play was the expansion at McCall and all that rework along Mystic Valley Parkway, Washington and so forth. And so, as I think I mentioned in our kickoff at the high school on November 16th, this being an MSBA project, they're going to be pretty restrictive about what really falls into the project funding agreement. So I think if, if, if there's interest in funding like a broader sort of, broader exploration, let's say, of the Lynch project, that would most likely needed to be fun, need to be funded separately. And it strikes some of us that really the time to do that wouldn't necessarily be this coming spring. That feels to some of us like we're getting ahead of ourselves because there's, we will know so much more about Lynch in the fall when obviously we're actually making the pitch to town meeting. I mean, for me personally, I feel like presenting the Lynch project at Fall Town Meeting almost, that goes 90% of the way towards selling the need for, you know, the supplemental traffic evaluation. There's, there's another element to that that's important that I know you and I have already talked about offline. And that is this, the construction of Lynch is going to be difficult for some folks for a couple of years. It is highly likely that one of the two, it is, it is virtually certain, actually. One of the two entrances to the site will be closed to yellow buses, to parents, to kids. It's going to be strictly for construction, vehicles and equipment and materials. And therefore imagine now, you know, all the rest of the Lynch traffic is coming in from one of those other entrances. So that's going to have a significant impact for those two years. And I, I would argue that's almost like, I can imagine the traffic safety study kind of has two things to look at. One is what's the impact of Lynch construction? And what needs to be done almost on an interim basis? And then what are the kind of the, the legacy impacts of Lynch? And again, I think waiting until the fall means the board, you know, with, with the input, with the help of Charlie and his team and traffic, you know, engineer and civil and so forth, I think would have just a much clearer picture. I think that's an important story to tell and an important thing for folks, for, for us to look into. But it, it feels like spring is a little early for that.
Right? That's useful, that's, that's, that's a good point. So I, I was thinking we would probably try to just move through these points the way they are set out in, in Beth's report and I, you know, so to just to lead off with the well field property. A lot of work has, has been put into doing that transfer already. I know Meg has been working on that and Anderson and Krieger, you know, I, I don't think there's, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but you know, there's really not a lot of, there's really no reason for the town to hold on to this well land. This, this parcel has always been part of the, the Lynch grounds and is, you know, we would, we're not, there's no, no possible use or, you know, building we would put on it. So of course, you know, there's total support for transferring control to the schools to allow the, the Lynch problem, project to move forward and doing, doing that at, at Springtown Meeting is, has been our plan. So just to, to be sure that, you know, we, we do what we need to to set this, set this up for success with the MSBA. You know, Beth and I have been talking about just going ahead and having the board vote to put the warrant article on the, the spring warrant to, to affect this transfer.
And can I add, Susan, that in actually, to actually build on the land, the wells need to be decommissioned. There's a whole administrative process that, that the town has already been pursuing. VHB has been giving some helpful information. Meg White has brought all that back to the EFPBC. The EFPBC has already sort of discussed and acknowledged that whatever the costs are to actually decommissioning the wells. And so one piece is just transferring the land. The other piece is what do we have to do so that we can use it? Whatever those costs are will, are simply assumed to be Lynch project cost. So that this, there would be no sort of coming back to a subsequent town meeting to say, okay, we got the land. Now we need a separate appropriation. This is all assumed to be part of the Lynch project cost.
Okay. So does anyone on the select board have any thoughts or suggestions around, around the well field property? I think, you know, I don't see any hands. Looking around, yeah, I think that this is pretty much a foregone conclusion that we want to do this.
It makes complete sense to me.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I guess I would be looking for a motion or Beth.
I think Mike has his hand up.
Oh, does he? See, I didn't have everybody on.
No, no, no worries. Thanks, Chris, and everyone has been working on this. It's great and I'm glad that we're able to resolve the well field area there. We were actually, we were planning on putting a big hockey rink there, Chris, but if you need it, take it certainly. So it's all, it's all you. But thank you again, seems like it's light lifting on, on our end. The traffic piece, you know, I want to make sure that it's not considered to be supplemental. I know kind of on the financial side, we, we may look at it that way. But I think it's really necessary for the select board to fund whatever is needed there. The, as you know, Chris, part of the strategy there was that we're bringing more people there. It's a bigger building. So, you know, we won't need to make sure that it works. That's, it's a really, it's a particularly tight site to get to. And so, you know, there, it's, it's going to probably need some significant investment, as we know, especially with the, the traffic work. It, it's, it's gotten pretty expensive. So it's, it, you know, we need to keep it funded with, as part of the project as much as we can. So, and the other piece that I just wanted to mention too, we voted a carbon offset policy a few years back, and it's been helpful for us for some projects to kind of put that out there as well. So if we're taking up more green space, we got to offset that use somewhere else. So just, just wanted to kind of, you know, bookend the, my comments with, with some of those things. So thank you.
And Susan, if I could just reply to Mike real quick, I think maybe that's another reason just to wait until the fall and the traffic safety study. And I, and I, I do think it's very important, so I hope my remarks didn't suggest otherwise. But that may give us a little more time to understand how the MSBA's thinking has changed a little bit. Back when we did VO back in 2011 and 2010, it was a nonstarter to talk about putting a traffic light at the intersection of Johnson and Ridge. And I know how hard Mike worked on that to make that happen. So I think it, it would be helpful just to understand how broad, how wide can we look at traffic on this project? Get that just very, very clear with the MSBA. That helps us then, I think, understand, okay, so then how much further do we have to go and what's that going to cost?
Okay.
Some, some time would be good.
So Susan, my comments, you know, from the, the, the water department land or the, the well field. Yeah, I don't have an issue with it. I think we should have the, the article at town meeting. So I'm not sure if we need a vote for that now. I think with you asking the town manager to put an article for town meeting, that's enough. And then we'll take a vote once the, the warrant is out. You know, from a traffic study, I, I'd like to, if we could refer to it, maybe, and maybe it words, but words matter. It's, it's a transportation really, and because it's not just about traffic, it's not just about cars. It's about, you know, a lot of students walk to school and we want to make it safe for them to walk to school or bike to school. And that is a very tough location with Pond Street there. And I know a lot of students walk on Woodside and Pond. And, and on the other side, it's a neighborhood without too much traffic, right? So it's, it's a very tough location. We, as part of the McCall expansion, debt exclusion, we added the, the transportation improvements. It wasn't enough, but it was a, a good amount for the transportation improvements that we ended up at McCall. And that was, to me, that's a success story because we ended up with improvements to traffic and to pedestrian and bike safety on two intersections that were problematic for, for decades. And because we were able to put it together with the, with the expansion of McCall, we were able to make a huge improvement in those two intersections. So I think, you know, thinking more holistically about a transportation study more than just traffic. And it needs to be an integral part of, of every school project, but especially Lynch, because it is a tough location that it's at.
Susan, I just brought this page up on the traffic and safety page. There's actually a blurb here, Mariano, about the select board policy that was voted back in 2018. It actually highlights the success story at McCall that you just talked about. And it just kind of describes what the aspirational goals are of the policy, but goes further to say, you know, the scope of that work's not yet defined. But I agree with everything you said. And I, my memory is, I think we, you added about half a million dollars on the McCall project to, and that didn't really go all the way, but that, that went a long way.
Yeah, that's about right. It ended up being like 750, but obviously half a million went, went a long way. And, you know, again, that's, I, I think that that's something that we would look at repeating since it was a success story. I, I would certainly look at repeating that for the Lynch project.
I mean, yeah, I, I would agree with that, you know, given the, the way that, you know, the town plunked that very large Lynch school into that sort of area between a neighborhood and Pond Street and the, just the, there's, there's a lot to consider to make walking to school safe as well as the, you know, manage the traffic. And, you know, they're, they're both critically important. So I think it's, it is, we are looking at something along the same lines as with McCall, 500,000. Rich, did you have anything? I see Beth has her hand up, maybe, let's let Beth go ahead.
I'll defer to Beth.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks. I just wanted to just quickly jump in about timing of a traffic study. So I, I understand in terms of the school circulation piece, it might make sense to wait to the fall in terms of a broader circulation, looking at traffic and pedestrian and bike safety. I think it would be helpful because that's going to be a longer term, probably traffic study where we need to collect some data and look at some additional traffic counts and that type of information. That it might be helpful to start that process after Springtime Meeting as opposed to waiting to the fall so that we have a better idea come Fall Town Meeting, what kind of concept level plans we might be looking at in terms of potential improvements. So I hope it's kind of scoped out a little bit sooner in the process as part of the overall project and see kind of where that leaves us in terms of funding options. So that would be my only plug for, for doing it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, that, that's a good point.
Susan, I do have just a procedural question. I'm asking this because I know Karen is on the call with us tonight, representing the chair of the school committee. So from, and our, our OPM has expressed this interest as well. Since the PSR is submitted on March 3rd, that's obviously going to be before Springtown Meeting. If it, it, it is seen as valuable. And my understanding from Mina is this is something that would probably happen anyway, that there's sort of a two-step process here, that perhaps there is a meeting, it might even be a joint meeting between the select board and the school committee. The board discusses and decides to transfer the land subject to approval of the school committee and town meeting. And then the school committee votes and says, thank you, we appreciate it, subject to the approval of town meeting. And then town meeting happens and it's done. If there is, if Mina still feels there is some sort of joint action between the two boards that's necessary, it would be helpful to have that done before the PSR is submitted to the MSBA because that, I think, is a strong signal to them of the commitment that the, the land will be there, if you will, to support the project. If, I, I think I've captured that right. So that, that was a point that our OPM just wanted to make. I'm really not sure about how, how that's required, but if there were to be some action between our two boards, we would certainly want to do that before March 19th, because there's an election. But the, the, the PSR is being submitted on March 3rd.
Yeah, I, I, March, March 3rd is very soon. You know, I, I just think it would be valuable if we went ahead and had a vote. I mean, that as the board to instruct, you know, that as a board, we are placing this article on the Springtown Meeting warrant and instructing the town manager and town council to take, you know, do the necessary steps to affect that. I mean, I, I don't see why we don't just go ahead and do that. And that would be something that you could show, you know, whoever needed to perceive the intention.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we have that. I don't, we didn't ask Mina to stay. I don't think Mina is still with us. He was.
I think he's here, it's just, not in the main.
But if, if maybe you or Beth could just reach out to Mina and have that conversation. And if that's something he thinks is necessary or warranted, you know, you know how to reach Karen and we can figure out how to get that happen on the calendar.
Mina has his hand raised, so.
Oh, all right, you know, you're recognized. Thank you.
Hi Susan, I, I've, I've been here for at least this discussion.
Okay.
Mark asked me to come back in during it. I, I don't disagree with the steps you've, you've taken so far. You know, absent a town meeting vote, everything will be conditional on that. So I'm not sure that you need to meet separately in another meeting. The select board, I think, at, at this point, how I would represent is they've gone about, they've gone as far as they can go without further action from town meeting. The school committee taking a separate vote just to say that they would accept the land and incorporate into the project could go a long way for MSBA. And, and we've, we've been involved in past certifications, as I'm sure the design team, and I know Meg has in the past too, for MSBA. And, and there are often some final land use issues that get sorted out. This one I would consider a fairly minor one. It's a transfer of custody between town boards within the same town. There, you know, there's nothing that, that's suggesting that there was any ownership by any third party. So the, this interest is, is certainly something that could be highlighted to MSBA. And I think the, the school committee could second.
Absolutely. Once the school committee seconds it, I think it should be sufficient for the MSBA purposes.
That sounds good, thank you, Vivian and Mina. Makes, makes a lot of sense.
As it were done with the well field piece, we have Catherine and Jake from VHB here. So I don't know if there's any questions, we can let them go.
I don't have any, but I've been more involved in all the other discussions. So just anybody else on the board have any kind of questions or concerns? Nope.
Michael has.
Mike has his.
All right, I, I know I always ruin just when we're trying to get things finished up there. But, you know, I don't know if we need a vote or sense of the board. I mean, regarding those several things that Beth mentioned in her. I mean, um, regarding those several things that Beth mentioned in her memo. I, I don't know if we need to vote on that or just kind of direction.
Yeah, no, I was just mentioning for the wellfield piece, if we want, if we didn't have anything else there, we could let, um, the folks from BHB go and then continue on another part of the discussion.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, sure, of course, yeah.
Right, so, um, I think that would bring us to the, um, sustainability and, um, and energy management, set of issues. Which I, I think, you know, also have been pretty well discussed. You, you certainly are, um, you know, the EFPBC is talking about, um, this. And, um, the, you know, the TAPAs team has been looking at an all-electric building and, um, citing the building, you know, as you mentioned, where it's, uh, a good location for so, for solar. I, I'm preserving, I'm presuming solar would be on the roof. Um, and it faces, you know, the arc that the, the sun is, is following. Our concern is just to be sure that it's well understood and, and, um, and acted on that, you know, the town's climate action plan, we really anticipate this to be net zero building to the extent it is feasible. And we understand that, you know, that, um, that entails some generation on the site as well as, you know, the sustainability features built into the building itself. And we just want to be sure that we're, we're all on the same page, that the, um, the goals of the climate action plan are not aspirational, they're, they're real goals with a timeline and they're actionable. And that, um, as I, as I learned and heard at the EF, EFPPC table when I was on the EFPPC, it's much better to design and construct the sustainability measures into the building rather than have them be add-ons. And I would probably surmise as well, it would be best to have any of the onsite generation aspects also be considered and designed and built into the project rather than added on. So that, that's really the gist of what we're, we're trying to accomplish, uh, on, on this point.
So Susan, you can appreciate, and you're in a unique position. So you're a board member, you're a former school committee member, and you're a former EFPPC member. And this is, I think, the first time we've had a sustainability subcommittee on a major school building project. And Mr. Pruitt was very humble, he sort of undersold his role a little bit with you last week. So he does not just sit in on these meetings, but Ken is an official sitting member, uh, with all the authority everybody else has. And so we're pleased that he's going to contribute along with a couple of other, um, staff members and bring to bear, you know, all of his expertise. So I think all I could tell you, Susan, is that we really took pains to make clear, um, what Winchester's goals are, both in the RFP and in the project walkthrough. Architects came back and were looking for more information. Where can we get a hold of the climate action plan? We told them, we sent that information to them. There's real enthusiasm for, you know, uh, a, as we've heard from energy management folks and engaging early with the utilities. I think that conversation is going to start soon. You know, Charlie could certainly speak more to some of the processes that are, we're going to kick into high gear here very soon. But, um, very, very quickly, our sustainability subcommittee is going to be reviewing the lead scope scorecard and setting some goals, uh, for the project on the PSR. We'll be talk, not just talking about EUI, so energy use intensity, right? But, but kind of giving it some context. So can we benchmark some other projects? What are other districts doing? Do we really want to be in the middle of the pack? Do we want to be sort of at the leading edge, um, and why? And these are public meetings, so I think it's really, it's important to talk about it in a public way. Um, and to educate maybe those in the Lynch community that don't understand this very well. Kind of gives us everybody something to kind of rally around. But, uh, maybe Charlie can just take a moment and speak to, you know, how we can address some of those goals. Early in the project, remember that this is really about getting the MSBA to say, okay, we agree in five, go to town. And then we really have to focus on evolving that a little bit at the schematic level and of course get town meeting and voter support.
Yeah, I don't have too much to add. I mean, the, again, the fact of the matter is the MSBA process, as you all know, is prescriptive. And, and we follow their steps as they insist. And this initial step, um, I think, I feel like there's a lot of interest in a lot of different topics that kind of are going to evolve as the project evolves. So, or the only thing the MSBA asks for in this first, um, phase, again, just like the design, is really intention. So we're going to kind of start to chart a course, we're going to develop a lead kind of approach. Um, and that's going to be submitted to the MSBA along with a, with a kind of statement that says that the, 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 this is what the district intends to pursue relative to, um, lead. And following that, when we enter into schematic design, that is really when we have the opportunity, uh, in greater detail to start to study what the opportunities are here. Partially with utility companies, what pathway to select in terms of, um, possible rebates and, and, and the like. So it will unfold over time and we're excited about it. We know it's going to be a high efficiency building. We would, the, the, the topic of net zero, I think it's too early to talk about. I mean, it's really, you know, it's a balancing act between, you know, first costs and oper, you know, long-term operational costs. And so it's going to be a little bit, it, it'll be wrapped up in a budget discussion. But I am quite confident that the building will be at least net zero. I think it will be, well, we shouldn't be making statements. I expect it to be, um, net zero ready and it's going to be high efficiency. And it will be an all-electric building. So we're, but we're aware of the goals. I think it's just a matter of letting the process unfold. And our, we do have an initial, uh, meeting with the, um, sustainability subcommittee to kick that off, that process off. And we'll be, as I said, charting a course over the next few months to accomplish, um, those things.
All right.
Um, Susan, if I may. So from this standpoint, and I understand that there are a lot of details to be worked out, especially onsite generation, to be able to be net zero onsite is, is something that is, is still a detail that is, that we don't know if we can achieve right away. But I think, and, and I, I appreciate that Charlie, uh, said this, but the building, we expect it to be all-electric. We expect that there will be no, um, no carbon that will be used in the building. Whether we can achieve net zero, the, the only way we'll be able to achieve net zero later is if the building is all-electric. Right? Um, whether it is by purchasing, uh, electricity that is produced off-site, uh, and from renewables or whether it is by adding renewable production in, um, onsite. But the only way that we will ever be able to achieve it is, is if the building is all, all electric from the beginning. And so that's, that's my expectation is that, um, that is a minimum requirement.
I, I would just add, uh, in that hopefully, I, I don't know if this would take members by surprise or not, but really almost from the very beginning, Charlie has sort of acknowledged, we presume this will be an all-electric building. You haven't sort of heard such a great declaration from the EFPPC only because it is this iterative process, right? So you get together, you talk about MEP systems, and then you meet, you formally decide, you come to the EFPPC, you make a recommendation. But I agree with Mariano a hundred percent, um, as to kind of what the goal should be and why. I have every confidence we'll get there. I'm glad Charlie said what he did tonight. He, he has said as, as much at three or four other EFPPC meetings. And I think that, I think folks will be really pleased as, as we move forward. And, you know, Susan and, and other board members should certainly through Beth kind of, you know, share your, your hopes in terms of periodic updates from the EFPPC. But I think, I think you all in the town will be really pre-pleased at the sort of the thoughtfulness and creativity that's brought to bear on this project in every respect. And I mean, not just the design, but the building systems, the materials as well.
That's encouraging. That's, 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 that's good. Thank you.
Will it have air conditioning?
We expect that it will in some measure. This has been a popular question to the school committee, Rich. But how that air is cooled or dehumidified is a topic for conversation as part of our, you know, building systems discussions.
So Ken, you're, you're, thank you for joining us. Is, is there anything that you would like to emphasize or point out or clarify?
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Susan. I think, uh, the conversation tonight's been, been very encouraging. I think, uh, I agree with everything that's been said, um, from the standpoint of sustainability for the building. I guess I would just add to, just two positive comments. One is that, you know, I've been, um, watching, uh, from the wings, uh, almost all the FPBC meetings on the Lynch school thus far. And I'm just, um, reminded, uh, of, of just the tremendous amount of work that gets put into a project like this, um, obviously from town staff, but from volunteers as well, you know, from Chris and Jay and from the, the full EFPPC, from the school committee, from others. And as someone who's a, a resident of the town, who, uh, had a child go through the school system and still has one at the high school, I just appreciate, um, I appreciate that level of commitment and professionalism to do this job right, um, including from, from volunteers. And that's part of the reason that I'm delighted to be, uh, delighted to have been named to the sustainability subcommittee. I'm really looking forward to digging into this project with that lens, with the rest of, of the committee, starting next Wednesday. And I guess the other, uh, the other positive thing I would say is, you know, I think there are obviously many different and sometimes competing, um, considerations and constraints that go into a project like this. At this point, given the evolution of technology like heat pumps, like solar, it's possible to build an all-electric building and to get close to, if not even achieve, a net zero building for, um, often zero cost premium, that really the same, the same price. Doesn't mean it's always the case, but I think ten years ago would have been much more difficult to say that. We're seeing all-electric schools, including the Edmonton High School that I helped, uh, design when I was still an employee there until recently, get built with very low EUIs and all-electric for essentially no premium. And then the benefit of lower energy costs for, for the lifetime of the building. I, i- the other reason I'm excited to work on this is that i- if anyone, if any group within town is concerned about climate change, it's children. Um, I think we're all concerned about climate change, but in conversations I've had with high school students and middle school students, they're extremely upset and worried about climate change and the impacts on their future. And I think it's an exciting and positive thing to be able to design a building that, um, is, is not only not contributing to the problem, but will become a model for other town buildings and for other commercial buildings and homes in the future. For, for Winchester to, to be on the map as a community that's setting, setting an example for other communities for how to actually solve the climate, the climate crisis. And it's just exciting to be part of that.
Well said. Thank you. Thank you very much. And, um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's such a great thing to have a sustainability director and to have you be able to have this role with the EFPPC and on, on this project. So, um, thank you.
Thank you.
So Beth, I think, um, the only thing we need to touch on. Did he?
Yeah, just, uh, a, a, a final comment on the sustainability piece. I, 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 I think that it's important, um, for residents to hear from us that, you know, it's not just, um, at this point, having buildings be solar-ready or having the capacity to, um, be net zero, uh, or electric. You know, we're, we're ready now. I mean, that's why, you know, Ken is here and that's why we have a climate action plan. And so, um, you know, we are always having this conversation of, and had earlier tonight as well about cost and value. And so I think, um, we don't want to make the sustainability piece be an, an add-alternate on a, on a project and then have us carve it away when something else gets in the way. It's front and center and I think to Ken's, uh, point as well, um, you know, our, um, the future generations are, have an imminent concern, uh, about the, the future world they're living in. So it's, you know, our responsibility to build a building for the next fifty years. And it's, it's going to cost, um, more probably on the, the front end. But, um, I think that we need to communicate that cost to town meeting and to residents, um, that, um, this, this is the, the project that, um, needs to be built and, um, you know, net zero is a priority, electric's a priority. And these are our expectations. So, um, I, I know that we've all kind of shared that thought, but I think it's, it's helpful to know that it's, um, not, not just lip service, um, this, this building needs to move forward with those priorities. Thank you.
And Susan, if I could just, um, kind of build on that. I think, you know, this school building projects are a once-in-a-generation project, uh, right? Town doesn't build many new schools. I mean, I guess we've built quite a few new schools, but they've all been, uh, you know, fifty or sixty years old. By the time I got to rebuild them. But, um, you know, this is the opportunity for our generation to make the change here and to make sure that we're, um, achieving the goals that we've set out in our climate action plan, um, to do, do the best we can for the next generations here. So I think it's a really important, um, you know, leadership role for us to be showing within the town that this is, uh, you know, the direction that we feel very strongly about having. So, thank you.
Thank you. That, that's also well said. So I thi- I think we, we are, um, done with this topic. And we, we just need to touch on the, but the, uh, the risk assessment or the building security piece.
Yeah, can, could you or Beth maybe talk a little more about what?
Yeah.
Issue or the question is?
Yeah, I think that would be Beth, right?
For the risk assessment piece?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's more just, um, coordination with the consultant that we are ultimately going to be, um, selecting. We have to issue an RFP, um, for, to continue the next phase of the risk assessment, um, work that we're doing. And then also coordination with the police chief, who's the town's, uh, risk assessment coordinator on all this. So I don't know that there's kind of like an action item immediately, but making sure that's kind of on everybody's radar in terms of coordination.
That's why, I mean, I, I think what would be helpful, but you know, as that time comes, Beth, I think it would be helpful to have some conversation with, with Frank and Andrew and his team, just to be sure we're sort of in alignment on what some of the, the goals are or what the objectives are behind some of the safety and security recommendations. Just to be sure we're, we're on the same page, but, um, you know, but we'll get there. And I, and I thought I saw some reference too. So I was thinking maybe had more to do with, you know, bringing, uh, the, the police chief and fire chief into the design process. And, and they would be, just as they were actually on, on the McCall piece, um, is just a course of business. So they, they would absolutely be involved as well.
Yeah, I think, um, I, I'm not as familiar with the history as others maybe, but the risk assessment kind of coordinator pieces are relatively new kind of functions of the police chief. So just making sure that that, um, is kind of being elevated in any of the conversations we have.
Yeah.
Again, with the, with the, the idea again, being better to have this come into play at the right time in the design and construction process rather than as an add-on or an add-alternate, you know?
Agreed, agreed. But again, it got to be very sure, Susan, we, we have common goals when it, when it comes.
That's true. I get it. I get it.
My last plug for every single member of the board would be, tell your friends and neighbors, if they ever have questions, go to Lynch2025.com. That's, that website's going to, going to continue to grow. We're going to work really hard on a weekly basis to keep that presentations page current with documents. So what Charlie shared with you all tonight, I'll probably have on the website tomorrow. And so really would just encourage the town to use that as a resource for the latest and greatest information or if they have questions about how we got here.
All right.
Susan, can I just ask a question about swing space for a second?
Yeah, yeah.
Just, uh, I'm just trying to understand, Chris, uh, you know, the, how we arrived at eight to twelve classrooms that maybe needed for swing space. Based, is that due to construction site noise? What, like, how do we come up with that figure?
I, 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 best for Charlie to address that, but, but the website, the, the website on that design page, even I think with that eleven, eleven option grid even kind of calls out the magnitude of swing space needed for some of those different schemes. So in some case, it might be where the footprint is, lay-down area, et cetera. But I, I, I should let Charlie address that.
So there are a lot of, um, potential, um, swing space strategies. And we're going to share some of those with the building committee in, in a week or so. The idea of two grades was that it would potentially allow us to, um, remove enough of the existing building initially to accommodate additional parking and pickup and drop-off on a site that's going to be very tight if it's occupied by a building under construction and an occupied building at the same time. So that's the kind of the rationale for the idea of maybe two grades, which is about eight classrooms, depending on how you count it and what the population is. It could be nine. We've also talked about taking all students off-site, but I think there's a significant, significant cost and burden to the town of doing that. So I don't think that that's the preferred approach if we can solve it with taking less students off-site. But it's, right now, it's, again, it's a placeholder. This is evolving. It evolves each week. We continue to talk about it, but that's the rationale so far.
Is there a scenario where you don't envision swing space being needed or?
You could have, yeah, we're going to talk about that, but I think it may be so onerous that no one wants to, wants to take that, wants that burden. But I mean, you can always try, but I think, I think you'd have an extremely crowded site.
And also to Charlie's credit, Rich, if you go onto the design, if you go onto the website, you'll see there were, I think, two options that Tape developed. Maybe one, but I think maybe two that did not require any swing space. However, they didn't meet the project schedule. They, both of them are completed much deeper into 2026, which sort of makes sense, right? I mean, if time is no option, you can do almost anything without swing space. It just takes forever to get it done, which adds to not only just the impact on the community, but the longer you stretch out the project, the more expensive it becomes. So they did explore that, brought that back to the EFPBC, but our goal all along has been completion by fall of '25. Okay. But I should just underscore, and again, appreciate it, appreciate the board's vote tonight on the well-field parcel. It having the well-field parcel available is a big deal in terms of accommodating the construction, giving us some relief and minimizing the amount of swing space that we would need. There's an earlier version of the scheme that does not rely on the well-field parcel, and it's, it's a somewhat painful extruded option to evaluate and to build it would just have a huge impact at Lynch and would require, you know, probably another whole grade level of swing space. So it, the well-field parcel is helpful, not just in accommodating, let's say, the end result, whatever that may become in N5, but it's also very helpful in just how you build it, minimizing the impact.
Well, thanks, everybody. I think this has been a good discussion, and I've certainly learned some things. Sounds like we're set on the well field for now, and, you know, I know there's still a lot of work for people to do. And we'll try to get it all done and get everything lined up and vote on it in the spring.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Beth.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So that brings us to the transfer station working group. And I know Beth had kind of outlined the membership of that, and can probably take this, lead us through this.
I'm just going to share my screen here. So as I mentioned in the town manager report at the previous meeting, it's my intention to put together a working group to discuss the long-term financial considerations for operation of the transfer station. So my current recommendation is that we move forward with various staffs, so myself, assistant town manager, DPW staff, sustainability director, and town clerk, all of whom are very much involved with the transportation operations. And Ken, who is new to it, but I'm sure will be pulled into the, into the fold very quickly. Two members of the select board, two members of the finance committee, three town meeting members, one of which shall be a neighborhood representative. And I did reach out to the moderator, and she is happy to make, help make the selection for the for the three-time meeting members to participate in the group. So if the board is okay with it, I think I'd like to move forward with trying to get this group together and maybe we can start meeting like early March timeframe to start the conversation.
Anybody have any thoughts? People that, you know, personnel on this or? Mike?
Yeah, thanks, Susan. Oh, thank you for, sorry, I lost me for a second. Thank you for putting this together. You know, this has been evolving conversation. I know the finance committee had really done an exhaustive analysis for the, you know, our project last year. And so I think there's still a lot that we need to kind of work on to get the system that, you know, makes sense on the revenue side as well. So the list looks like a good, good group here, so that Beth has put together. So thank you for doing it. So happy to continue helping.
Absolutely. So does the board want to decide which two members would attend, or do we want to talk about that at a future meeting?
So, I mean, one thing is we're going to have two new board members mid-March. So I think maybe it makes sense to to wait until the election.
Sure, we can do that. So I'll work on getting the other folks assembled, and then we can regroup after the election to select the select board members. Makes sense.
Yep. Thank you. I mean, there's a lot for this working group to do, so let's take whatever incremental steps we can to get it started.
Yeah, definitely.
ARPA.
ARPA.
Small topic of ARPA.
So just kind of an update on where things are right now. Last December, we put out what we called kind of a last call to departments and various community groups and our boards committees for their ARPA requests. Some folks just resubmitted what they had already put forward when Lisa was here, and then some folks changed that, and then a few, there were a few new folks that that put together a request. So I sent out a spreadsheet, and I can bring it up if that's of interest to people with what those requests were. Everything was back to us, due back to us January 14th, and then like right after that timeline, we, the federal government issued these new ARPA guidelines, which changed kind of the rules completely for the town of Winchester, at least. They are now allowing what's called a standard allowance of $10 million to spend on government services. Winchester did not have a lost revenue in accordance with the original calculation, but because of this change, we are now able to consider the full amount if it was a lost revenue. So it does kind of change how we were looking at things originally. It changes it for the better, really. It now allows us to use our funds for the most flexible purposes, including spending to provide government services. So I guess the first question is, you know, there's some folks like the school department who probably may have made some different choices in terms of their ARPA requests had this rule been known at the time that we asked them to make those requests. So the question is whether we want to go back to folks and let them know that this is now available and see if there's any other changes. I hesitate to do it too many times because it's a lot of work for everybody to put these requests together, but maybe it's worth reaching out to the school department to see with that group in particular, if there's any changes that they would like to include. And so that's, that's one piece of it. The second piece is we're going to have to decide how to prioritize projects and funding going forward. One option that we've talked about is kind of a ranking process similar to what the capital planning committee does. But before we sort of get into that process, we kind of have to decide timing. So there's, we've talked a little bit about using some of the ARPA funds towards helping out with the acquisition price of the Washington Swan Street parcel. That could be significant depending on how it plays out. So do we want to wait to do any rankings until we figure that out? And then the second piece is, do we want to set aside a kind of a pool of money that could be used for future COVID-related expenses? To date, we've allocated about $466,000 towards COVID costs between the allocations made in January and November. A good portion of that money has already been encumbered. So there is, it's possible there may still be some funding left from that original appropriation, but it's, you know, it's hard to say over the next few years how COVID is going to change and what other responses will be needed from us. And then the final piece is that as we all know, we have a neighborhood, the Arbo and Wendell Street neighborhood, who were on the city of water, a city of Woburn Water due to some longstanding pressure issues. Those homes were started back in the 1950s on Woburn Water to address the pressure, and then there was a formal agreement made in the 1990s when Arbor Lane was built. The city of Woburn has identified high PFAS concentrations in their drinking water. And so as a result, Winchester moved very quickly to move those residents off of the city of Woburn Water and onto the Winchester water, but there has been a significant drop in their water pressure in their individual homes as a result of that. So we've worked with our consultant at Westman and Sampson to evaluate a variety of solutions to make sure that we can comply with both, not only the domestic water pressure issues, but also our fire flows. And so the recommendation that we have right now is to install booster pumps in those individual houses. Our recommendation is to do it through reimbursement program where the homeowners would purchase the booster pumps and install the booster pumps themselves. They would submit invoices to the town of Winchester, and then we would reimburse the costs for that work up to $6,000. And so at 38 houses, $6,000 each are requesting an immediate ARPA appropriation of $240,000 to be able to roll out that reimbursement program for the neighborhood in that area. We did have some discussions about the fire flow issues with Westman and Sampson. At this point, we're moving forward to keep one of the fire hydrants in the Arbor Lane Wendell Street corner on city of Woburn Water, and so we're working with Westman and Sampson and the city of Woburn to move that forward. And I'll be submitting a formal letter to the city of Woburn in the next week or so to formalize that. So that's kind of where things stand right now with the ARPA piece. I know there's a lot in there. So happy to take questions and continue the conversation.
Mariano?
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions on the, on the, on the water for the Harvard Lane and Wendell Street. Have we priced out the installation of pumps in individual homes? And is $6,000 a reasonable number, or are the homeowners going to be left with bigger bills?
Yeah, so based on the information we have from Westman and Sampson, that is a typical installation would be $6,000. The piece that could increase the cost is if it was being installed in a finished basement, and they wanted to do some additional carpentry work to try to disguise it in some way. That could definitely increase the cost. So right now, you know, we're recommending that we would just be reimbursing for the plumbing and electrical and then any kind of minor carpentry or other plaster work to kind of make things whole in that area, not any sort of new interior construction. And anyway, if the board wanted to expand that, that's something we could do. We could add a little bit of buffer here if we thought there were a few, you know, as things came up, if we thought there were some that we would want to, you know, increase the amount on a case-by-case basis. But based on the feedback we've received, we feel this is a pretty typical number.
And have we talked to the homeowners impacted and they're okay with the with this proposal?
Right, so that was, that's kind of the next step before we kind of rolled out a program to the homeowners. We wanted to make sure that the board was okay with funding it. So our goal would be to develop with town council a series of documents and guidelines, and then to roll out, send that out to everybody and then set up a separate public meeting with the residents to discuss the process and have Westman and Sampson there as well.
And what would the cost of a centralized pump McDonald's field be?
So that's over two pieces. It's, there's a design cost and then there's construction cost. It's somewhere between a million and a million and a half dollars to construct that. And it would take probably a year, two, year and a half with the current delays. So our recommendation is that this booster pump program would need to happen regardless because the water pressure issues are immediate. So if for some reason, we're not recommending it at this point, but if for some reason there was a longer-term need to install such a centralized system, it would not eliminate the need to address the issue immediately with these individual booster pumps.
Okay, thank you. No, I mean, I think this is a good use of ARPA funds. Utilities is, was one of the things that was one of the original things that ARPA funds were designated for, so.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think this is exactly what ARPA is for, and we should, you know, fix this situation as quickly as we possibly can for these poor people who are dealing with this kind of strange arrangement that was struck with the developer years ago. I have a sort of detailed question like Mariano had, but, you know, are we sort of recommending what pump these folks should get? Is there a standard type that, you know?
No.
Would it be cheaper to get all of them as a, you know, one?
Yeah, I think it makes the most sense, just in talking with Westman Sampson and our DPW for, you know, every house is different. Different folks may have different needs in terms of what they have in their individual homes. So I think it makes the most sense to do it as a reimbursement program so that they're able to work with their own contractors and plumbers to decide what works best for their individual houses. We've done similar programs over the years with the backflow prevention valves, and also we've allowed people to disconnect some pumps from their source systems. We've had a similar reimbursement program.
Okay.
And also with the lead line program that we've done recently as well.
Okay. Um, Rich, Mike, any thoughts? I think this one is a priority. We should, you know, we should definitely just do this.
This isn't, I, sorry. I agree, Susan, this is a priority. In terms of, and I have favorable action on it, but in terms of the other comments Beth has made, I would go back to the school department on the ARPA stuff since the rules changed. I actually read the, some of the rules today. I read the 40-page summary, not the 400-page document.
Yeah, there is that shorter summary. Thank God.
Which was helpful, and it seems like, you know, it's much broader now, which is, you know, a good thing for us. So certainly I'd go back to the schools if they were under the impression and submitting something under the old rules. I would certainly go back to them. I wouldn't go back to everyone, because I'm not sure they applied to everyone, or they would change anything, and certainly we've gone back twice at this point. So I did that. The other thing I just wanted to highlight, possibly moving along quicker, would be just some of the behavioral health, mental health initiatives that are out there. I know the health department had the $35,000 cost in there to get some, you know, communication information out, support some programming, you know, to the community on the different needs. I think this is, as we get towards an endemic, you know, certainly it's been a crisis all along, but I think now certainly, you know, it certainly is getting worse, and that information would be helpful to get in the hands of the community. I know, I think a mailing is planned, so with a booklet. So that's something we could, you know, agree to move along a little quicker. It's not a huge cost, but I think it would be very beneficial to get that out to everyone.
Yeah, so I would be okay with funding the water and the mental health request from the health department. And if we're going to go back and ask the schools, I think the IT department also, because I think there were changes also that would affect the IT department, and I know we've, we've underfunded that department for many years. So if there's anything else that they would do, given the new guidelines, I think those would be the two departments I would ask.
Mike?
Yeah, I agree. I don't want to repeat everything everyone said. I mean, I think it was a little bit of a surprise to us that the ARPA funding was so restrictive and really, you know, was very limiting for the schools, because that had been really a focus of the federal funding and really part of the impact. So I'm happy that we're addressing the some of the mental health needs as well that are there. And I guess I hadn't really thought about it at this point until Rich mentioned it, but, you know, the next endemic phase of this, you know, we need to prepare for in a different way, and I don't know what that looks like, you know, financially for us. So I guess I would like us to And I don't know what that looks like, you know, financially for us. So I guess I would like us to kind of carve out some bigger chunks, you know, if we're saying we're focusing on schools, affordable housing, you know, mental and behavioral health, you know, ongoing health needs, and that might be easier for us to prioritize. And because I think that we got a little bit ahead of ourselves and, you know, I just want to manage expectations on the, on the funding for the rest of the, the community for this. But and then to the point, certainly the, you know, funding the, the pump infrastructure work for those homes is necessary. And thanks, Beth, and you know, for moving forward so quickly on that. It's one of those things where it's helpful that we have our town engineer as our acting town manager. So, you know, it's not probably as much fun for her, but it enabled us to really move forward. So thank you. And we won't require you to, when you're speaking as the engineer, to go back downstairs to your office and but we appreciate it. We certainly get the benefit of that. So thank you.
The other thing I just wanted to mention, I forgot, is that we recently received correspondence from the firefighter union and the two police unions regarding premium pay that's allowed under the ARPA plan. So premium pay, I believe, can add up to $13 now hour to eligible workers' wages and in aggregate cannot exceed 25,000 per eligible worker. So this was a request made by all three of those unions to consider this as part of our ARPA allocation. So I think it's something the board will need to consider as we get further into the conversation about the, the distribution of those funds.
So if I may, I think your, your first point there in the memo, that once we have all these requests, I think, putting them on a spreadsheet and then each board member ranking them, just like the capital planning does, that way every, every request gets a, gets an equal view, right, by everybody. I think that makes sense. And then we can, you know, we can rank them individually, send them back to you. And then it can be compiled and, you know, in a priority list. And then I think that will make the, the allocation by the whole board smoother process.
So do we need to vote on the the booster pump plan there?
Yeah, so I, I move that we appropriate $230,000 from ARPA funds to a reimbursement program to pay for the installation of individual booster pumps in the 38 homes in the Arbor Lane Wendell Street neighborhood that were impacted by the PFAS issue. And also that we appropriate $35,000 from ARPA funds to the health department to fund mental health, crisis planning and the other requests that were on their, on their application.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. The only thing that I would add, and I, I don't want to repeat everything either on this, is that I, I feel that the time is, if not now, very soon, that we should really sort of face the likelihood that we need to allocate a large chunk of this ARPA money to affordable housing, to Washington and Swanton in particular. I mean, it's, it's just, it's the situation we're in. And if it turns out that some long run, you know, long-term scenario, we do get 5.27 or 5.3 million dollars back for, you know, developing that parcel or redeveloping the parcel, then, you know, we will just have been prepared, you know, and prudent for setting aside this money. But it just seems like that's what we're going to have to do. And we should do that and be clear about it and, and, you know, and be sure the public understands why. So let's just.
Yeah, can we ask town council to figure out how we would do that? Like, because we don't have an RFP, right? We don't have, like, what's the, I mean, one option, I guess, is we could transfer it to the, or we could appropriate to the Affordable Housing Trust, right? And then?
So I think, based on what I've heard from Stacy, that her interpretation that would not be allowed because the money has to be expended by or encumbered and putting it in a separate account does not meet the definition of encumbered by December 2024. That's a good conversation to have.
Yeah, like how, how we would do this. I mean, there, there, the, it has to be expended, I forget the date, but it's not.
December 31st of 2024.
2024.
Has to be encumbered by that point.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is just, you know, we should just decide how much, a million, two million? And go ahead and spend it. And then eventually, you know, there will be an RFP, there will be something. And maybe we do get some of that back. But I just have to face the financial situation that we're in.
I, I think it's good that we kind of discuss earmarking a certain amount for affordable housing. I mean, I don't want to kind of negotiate against ourselves by, you know, appropriating to a specific project right out of the gate, but it's good for us to carve out that, that money and because it, it may be that it's, you know, waterfield that there's a better benefit to us than there is, you know, on Swan and Wash. I, I don't know, but certainly we should earmark and kind of, you know, protect a little bit of that, those funds for affordable housing. I mean, it's a priority, you know, part of the, the ARPA legislation. And so it's, and certainly it's a priority for us. So it would, but to your point, I think we need to communicate that, you know, pretty clearly to the community.
So, I mean, I agree with what's been said. You know, I would like to see us figure that out first, figure out the school part, maybe figure out public works and then maybe rank, go, you know, everything else. See what's left over and then we can rank. I don't know how. I mean, I think those are more substantive conversations we, we need to have more than just ranking those big, big items. That's just me. I don't know. Because I mean, you know, the, the DBW request is $6 million. So, you know, I mean, we could go through and rank each project, but I don't know if that's going to lead us to a result. So.
Just having been involved in putting that together as town engineer, the list, the order that they're listed is the priority of which, you know, DPW wanted to have the projects funded. So I know the South Reservoir Raw Water Mixing Station is a, is a big priority for them. That's a water quality issue they have right now.
So my suggestion would be to figure out the affordable housing piece, figure out the school piece, possibly figure out the DBW piece and then rank from there. I don't know. I just.
It seems simpler.
And I guess the, you know, ongoing health department, you know, needs as well. I mean, that's going to be kind of a, a separate track there, even if it's, you know, mental and behavior health as well. So I mean, there's, there's a few buckets there that, you know, can you know, take, consider a lot of investment. So.
I mean, maybe we, we reserve some funds for, you know, COVID slash, you know, mental health, you know, some wellbeing fund, see if they need to be expended. Yeah. I mean, I just don't, I don't know. I mean, earmarking a million dollars for COVID, you know, right the second would be the, you know, we don't have crystal ball, right? I mean, it could be over in a couple of weeks, knock on wood, but who knows? Probably not, but.
That's a wish, but yeah.
Wishful thinking. I, I, I think we're at 39 cases this week. So certainly, you know, on the, on the right side of things. So.
Okay.
Okay, so I will reach back out to the school and IT and see if there's anything additional that they want to include with the, with the new language. And then we can regroup from there.
Okay.
Sorry, one more thing, as I'm saying, it's getting late, so my brain's not functioning as fast, or doesn't function fast at all anytime. I think there's other projects, you know, because the rules have changed and just reading them today, I think there's a lot of other projects that the town has in their pipeline that, you know, weren't necessarily considered the first round as well. You know, I don't know if, if from a municipal side, Beth, if you want to just see if there's anything glaring that's missing that you might want to throw in the queue.
That's not helpful, Rich. We're trying to reduce.
So.
I was, I was, I was going to say, I was going to say, you know, I think water and sewer has always been, you know, looming and that's part of what makes capital planning, the capital planning committee so, you know, worried as they look at these large, large cost water quality type things or, or, you know, dams that need rebuilding and so, you know, the fact that the water and sewer is on there, I think is, is the, at the top for the town, but, you know.
Well, maybe it's just.
A little bit.
Sorry, maybe it's simple. It's just getting a, an opinion from capital planning, what would, what would be good to get off their plate.
About $25 million worth of profits?
I know, that's, that's.
There's state money too out there. Rep Day's listening or Senator Lewis?
Okay. Well, I think we have a direction anyway.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that might be helpful for the board to think kind of big picture is, you know, there's these categories that are listed in the ARPA guidance. And so maybe you want to think like big picture, how that pie, and I kind of broke it out in terms of what the requests were, but what's the pie overall that we might want to allocate each section of that, each category, right? And then that might help us figure out what projects would fall into, into that.
Okay.
Each category. I don't know.
And it's helpful that each department has ranked theirs, right? So I, I wouldn't want us to start reprioritizing what DPW has submitted, right? I wouldn't want us to come up with a number for DPW projects and then that buys out the ones in order that, of importance for the DPW.
Does that make sense? All right. Budget. Have that on here.
One more fun, one fun thing after another, right?
Yes.
Just pull my screen up here. Hold on a second. All right, everybody see that?
Yep.
So this is our last meeting before the February 15th budget is due. So I just wanted to kind of regroup with where things have landed. So FY23 budget assumptions, we bumped up the new growth number a little bit to, to, from 800 to 850. Stated number is what's based in the governor's budget, which is a one and a quarter increase from last year. Local receipts, we've increased quite a bit from last year. This is the average of the last several years. So we kind of took advantage of, kind of left out some of the COVID impacts and went back just kind of some of the earlier years in terms of local receipts. And then added 75, 70,000 for the increased building permit fee and then another 250,000 for the increased transportation, transfer station fees, both for the residential and commercial increases. And then going through the list here is expenses. So general government, library, archives, historical commission, health council and aging veterans, public safety, public work. So that the overall, we have a 3.64% increase from FY23, excuse me, from FY22 to FY23 in the total municipal departments. On the education side, we have a, a school department voted a budget with a 4.73% increase over FY22 numbers. Vocational education, that's a significant increase because it all, it includes not just the 2% increase on your, your cost, but also an extra $100,000 for the Northeast Metro Tech building project to pay down our part, our share of that building project. And then the, the estimated salary increase for unallocated wages is 2.5%. Energy is a little bit higher than normal because number one, we, we increased, we, we took the higher volumes, we used FY18, 19 and 21. And then we have an increase in the actual cost of, of the purchase of that. And then on the health insurance side, we've received from Harvard Pilgrim, we've received a 3.8% rate increase. We're also currently working with Maya to evaluate a proposal for health insurance from them as well. I don't have too much to share in way of details, but we'll be working over the next few weeks to evaluate that both internally and then potentially through the IAC process. For the purposes of the town manager's budget, I'm going with the more conservative Harvard Pilgrim estimate that we have, which is this 3.8%. So that's the basis for all the budget analysis we've done for FY23. Any questions on this piece of it? Okay, so then as, as part of what we've done, not only looking at FY23, but also looking at budget projections for the, for a three-year model for FY24, 25 and 26. So based on kind of the, some of the conversation we had at the last budget summit, I put together kind of three scenarios, excuse me, working with Mark and Stacy. The names, I'm not in love with these titles, so open to other suggestions that people have them, but we looked at kind of a conservative approach, a middle of the road, and then what we call best case, which isn't always, is best case in terms of lowest cost, not necessarily best case all around. So the conservative piece has a lower new growth number, 1.25% state increase, local receipt increase at 1%. A pretty high municipal department, education, unallocated wages increase as well as energy and health insurance. And then each scenario gets better from there down. So looking at that, you know, looking at the, where we are in FY23, we have about a $610,000 deficit based on those assumptions I originally stated. And then looking out for those three kind of scenarios, this shows where we fall for FY24, 25 and 26 in terms of potential deficits. So, you know, somewhere between, I think the conservative approach is, is probably very conservative for FY24. So I think we're probably closer to the, to the middle, to best case scenario for FY24, but then you can see how it goes from there. And then carrying those numbers over into an analysis of the operating reserves. So right now, our policy is to maintain reserves between 6 and 10%. So we anticipate that in spring town meeting, we would allocate funding for the FY23 budget, which would put us at a 12.5% operating reserve. Even after we have to, if we have to allocate some additional funds for that FY23 operating budget. And then you can see from there FY20, at the end of FY23, FY24 and then FY25, where we land in terms of our operating reserves. So I, I don't think it's any surprise to anybody, you know, the, the override that was voted in spring of 2019 was for the FY20, 20 budget. At the time, I actually just looked up and found a quote from Lance Grenzback, who was the, I believe the chair of the select party at that time, is that, you know, they, this was a two to three year override that was passed, it was an $8 million operating override, $2 million capital override. And we certainly will get, we'll get that three plus years out of that override as we move through 24, excuse me, through 23. And then, you know, it's likely we could handle through a heavy use of free cash getting through 24, but once we get into FY25, it's going to be very challenging to move forward without an additional override at some point in the, in the future. So that's where things are right now. Any questions? Comments?
So FY24 would be the fifth year of the override, right? Because FY20 was the first year. So I mean, I think that that's something that, you know, we, we, we need to get, you know, we need to communicate that we've been able to extend. you know, we need to communicate that we've been able to extend the, the expected life of the override through, you know, through very careful planning. I did have some questions. The conservative number has 6% for education, which, I don't know, I, I, I haven't seen a 6% number for education ever, since when I was in FinCom or Select Board. So I think that that's a pretty way up there number. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I can go back and look at some of the previous years. So I think there was at least one year more recently where it might have been closer to that, but I, I can go back and double check that.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that's the high watermark that we've had in, in the past. But, you know, I wouldn't expect that we would have that kind of number for three years in a row, right? If we're, if we're going to be planning for that.
Correct.
But, but, you know, I can see if we're going to be conservative, then taking the high watermark makes, makes sense. But thank you. No, I think this is, I think this is really helpful. I think having the multiple lines for where we might be in the future is, is, gives us a range that is a lot more helpful than just having one line since
Yeah.
there's just way too many unknowns going out a couple of years in the future. So.
I agree.
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah, thanks, Susan. Yeah, this is really helpful, Beth. And to Mariano's point, I think that we need to really manage expectations around the, the life of this previous override, which was really to fund, you know, a, a lot of the school expenses from prior years, right? So it wasn't really even funding forward. It was kind of funding what we had already encumbered. So, so, you know, my concern is we're, you know, looking at negotiating with all of our bargaining units. And, and then the, the healthcare piece, you know, it's, it, I, I don't know. I know that Beth, you and Mark and Stacy have been kind of meeting with, on, on that. And it's part of a larger discussion. But, you know, that, that's, that's always the, the risk for us. If we get a big number there, it, it can really throw off the budget. So, you know, I think Mariano's right on the, that's a really high, high watermark and conservative projection for the schools. But, you know, I think health insurance is the one that's probably the, the biggest risk for us. But, I don't know.
Rich, any thoughts?
I agree with everyone said so far.
Yeah.
I thought, sorry, I just, just seeing where we're at and taking this multi-level approach. I mean, have you taken into account in your budget this year to try to stretch as much as possible? I mean, with this, I mean, seeing the future. The way it is, we, I mean, sometimes when you start earlier, you know, you can.
Yeah, so. I have put forward what is a level service budget, right? Not level funded, level service. So carrying over existing positions, added to very, so I increased, added the part-time dispatcher that was requested by the police station, and then increased the conservation agent from part-time to full-time. And those are really, aside from some additional kind of professional services money here or there, there are no additional staff, many staffs, very, you know, departments requested staff that are all valid requests, right? Nothing that came forward was something that is out of the blue or out of the ordinary or even out of what's reasonable. So, you know, the, the argument is should there, seeing this, right? Should there be cuts made as opposed to a level service budget? You know, should we be looking at a much lower rate salary increase? You know, I would argue that given the inflation we're seeing and given the, I think, strong desire for us to maintain our staff, it's obviously definitely to our benefit to maintain the staff that we have as opposed to trying, having to hire, replace positions that an investment in staff, short-term investment in staff is worth, worth it for the town in the long term in terms of a minimal, so fairly minimal wage adjustment. So, yeah, I mean, that, those are the kind of decisions we weighed in, in reviewing the departmental requests and reviewing this data. But, you know, that's kind of where I landed for the, for this year's FY23 recommendation. Mariano, hand up.
Yeah, I, I was going to point out that the additional dispatcher, that was actually something that was in the override. Like we, when we had the, what the override pays for, one of the things was the dispatcher. Because, you know, we had times when we only had one dispatcher on duty. And that was, we, we identified that as a, as a risk. We, we ended up not hiring that person because COVID reduced the number of, of 911 calls that we were getting because of the, you know, people weren't going out. And so, you know, now, and now we're adding that to the budget. But it's, I, I understand that it's an addition to the budget, but it was an addition that was part of the, of the override of what people voted for.
Yeah. And, and I think, you know, as we consider maybe a future override, there's, it's worth having those conversations about additional positions that make sense for the town. You know, I think there's a few places where I've seen need and, and feel a little frustrated that I'm not able to do something more to help some, to support some departments, right? We, we as a town work very lean, I would say, compared to a lot of other municipalities. So, you know, it's worth to kind of take a look at our resources as, as a whole if we're looking at a future override and, and evaluate where there might be some gaps.
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Susan. I, I think we also need to discuss, you know, this discussion or continued discussion that we had with the, the previous override, that there's a structural deficit there. And it may be that we have smaller overrides every couple of years for a million dollars here, a million dollars there for capital and for expenses. It's, it's really hard to just go out for a $10 million override and kind of just wait till it builds up and, you know, our, you know, reserves decrease to, you know, such a low level that, you know, everyone's wringing their hands. It, so that, that might be part of the discussion. I don't know if that's the solution. But I know it's something the FinCom was, was looking at before as well, that we know that this structural deficit is going to continue. And it, it, it's, it's hard to, to fund our departments and make necessary hires. And as Beth said, especially on the town side, I mean, we run extremely lean. So it's, and a lot over the past several years has been going to the schools with the, you know, growth that they've seen there. And, you know, there's a lot of mandatory special education, you know, costs also that, that of course we need to support and everything, but it's, it's, it's going to be there. So there's no surprises anymore. Nobody made any mistakes. There's not a pile of money sitting somewhere. It's just, this is what it costs to run the town.
Yeah, and I, I mean, as we all know, the school budget is a large piece of that. So, you know, jump, originally, we were kind of looking at a 4% increase and then it went up to 4.73. That, that is a big jump in, in kind of where we landed for FY23. And as Frank mentioned at the meeting, the budget summit we had there, there is a structural deficit with respect to the special education funding. So that is a, a piece that, you know, really does have a significant effort, you know, impact overall on our town budget. And we just have to make sure folks understand that. It's an important piece for our community.
Right, okay. Yes, thank you for doing this. We're ahead of FinCom. They're, they usually do this and we've done it first. And we're thinking of, of, you know, how to deal with it. So. Let's see, we need to vote on the election warrant. And I think we've talked about warrant articles enough.
Do you need me to read the whole warrant or?
No, I think you can. Maybe, Beth, can you put it up on the screen?
I mean, I have it.
I remember. Mina suggesting that at one point with something else, if it's on the screen, you can say I presented and whatever.
That's no doubt. We know you can.
Yes, we know.
Beth, do you have it or you want me?
I do.
And actually, you have read it all in the past, I remember.
Okay. So I move that we instruct the constables of the town of Winchester that in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Winchester who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the polling place designated for the eight precincts in the town, namely precincts one through eight will report to Winchester High School at 80 Skilling, 80 Skillings Road in Winchester, Massachusetts, and the gymnasium, located in the second floor at the rear of the building on Saturday, the 19th day of March 2022, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the following purpose, to cast your votes in annual town election for the, election of candidates for the following offices, one moderator for one year, two seats select board for three years, one seat board of assessors for three years, one seat board of health for three years, one seat board of health for one year, two seats library board of terroristries for three years, one seat planning board for three years, two seats planning board for one year, two seats school committee for three years, one seat housing authority for five years, eight town meeting members for three years in accordance with the precinct lines in effect January 1st, 2022, for a total of 64 town meeting members. Note precinct two, one seat for one year, precinct four, one seat for one year, one, one seat for two years. The underendorsed seats on the planning board one year and housing authority five years are eligible for writing candidates. Here I fail not and make return of this warrant with your doings there on to the town clerk before the day of said election, given under our hands and sealed the 7th day of February 2022.
Roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you for reading all that. So the, we do have a consent agenda as well, right?
Any questions or comments on the consent?
Yes.
No questions or comments? I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
Roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
And I just wanted to mention on the warrant articles. So the warrant closes March 11th. So I think it'd be helpful for Mark and I, if there are individual board members who have articles that you are interested in working on, to get those, you know, started, start the conversation and, and, and have the conversation with the full board so that that folks might be interested in moving forward.
Do you mean just this board or do you?
Yeah, no, this board.
This board, okay.
Yeah.
No, I was just, you know, I, I feel like every budget year I learn something and every warrant that we go through, I learn some strange thing. It's, it's, it's so complicated and you, you guys take care of it behind the scenes. So I'm, you know, not necessarily aware of it. So, okay. Thank you. I guess we're done?
I move that we adjourn.
Again.
Roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Thanks, Juan Cam.